All here from Somerset, Somerset West.
Okay.
All right, you ready?
Yep.
You know what, I put my seat down and now I feel short. Okay. All right, good evening and welcome to the April 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Troy, City of Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented by the Planning Commission.
State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of nine residents appointed to serve our community. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Other individuals participating in the meeting include representatives of the city's planning department, city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle-Wotman Associates.
If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward to the lectern when recognized and clearly print your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please give your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cell phone or any other device that might disrupt this meeting, please either switch it to silent mode or turn it off. At this time, I ask the Planning Commission Recording Secretary Jackie Friends to conduct the roll call, please.
Ms. Malala-Hali, here. Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Krantz?
Here.
Ms. Prakas?
Here.
Mr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Mr. Buketer?
Here.
Oh.
Okay. Next is the approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Mr. Faison, seconded by Ms. Malala-Hali. Any discussion? All right, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Ms. Prakas?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes from our April 8th, 2025 meeting. Yep, Mr. Fox moves and Mr. Beekner seconded. Any discussion, corrections, edits? Okay, we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Krantz?
Yes.
Ms. Prakas?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. We're moving on to public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anyone's here to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda, you can come up now. Okay, see nobody. We're going to move right into our planned unit development. It's public hearing, Planned Unit Development PUD 021, JPLN 2024-0012. It's the Proposed Somerset West Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan for Phase 1A, North Side of Big Beaver, West Side of Coolidge, 3100 West Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-19-476-002, 88-20-19-476-003, and 88-20-19-430-004. Section 19, presently zoned PUD, Planned Unit Development Zoning District. So tonight, I'm going to do something a little bit different. I'm going to actually ask the applicant to come up first and do a presentation, and then I'm going to ask all of us to hold our questions, and we'll turn it over to the building department so they can, you know, follow up and tell us what we need to know, and then we can ask our questions of the building department, then we'll invite the applicant back up so we can address questions. It is a public hearing tonight, so after all of that, we'll open the public hearing, and then we will, you know, turn it back to Planning Commission resolution and discussion. Yes?
We got a promotion. We're the building department now.
Oh, I'm sorry I keep doing that. Planning department. I think I've done that before. Sorry, sorry. Okay. So without further ado, we'll invite the applicant up at this time. Please just sign in and state your name for everyone in the room.
Hi, Nate Forbes, managing partner of the Forbes Company. On behalf of our partners, Stanley Franklin and Franklin Associates, glad to be back before you today. It was seven months ago, believe it or not. I think I stood up here. I think I actually shed a tear or two, just thinking about the history of this site and what we have all have been through. And I also thanked all of you and the entire city of Troy for the partnership, especially in your security measures, your public works department, your building department, in allowing us to continue to explore our vision for the Big Beaver Corridor, making Somerset arguably one of the top eight or nine shopping centers in North America. I was on a call last week with Green Tree who ranks the centers every year, and they had Somerset somewhere between seven and nine as the most compelling retail environment in the entire United States of America. And to me, that just brings a real warmth to my heart. And I can tell you from day one, when we partnered with Stanley and his family on Somerset, we shared a vision, and that vision was to bring unique retail to southeastern Michigan. Today, we stand before you. We are almost 45% of our retailers are their only stores in the state of Michigan. So they don't have competitive shopping choices. They have to come to Somerset, and they have to come to Troy. And when they come to Troy, they make that commitment. They drive longer, they stay longer. Sometimes they stay in our hotels, and they eat at the restaurants in the Big Beaver Corridor. This is a major, major attraction to the city of Troy, and you have somebody in our collective companies that believe this is a community asset. And as we look at embarking on what is to be in the future of Somerset West, just know that whatever we talk about today, know it's a conceptual development plan, but the most important component that you are looking at and understanding is the steward of that development. And we are the stewards of this development, and we will ensure that the gateway to the city of Troy will maintain its prominence in terms of architectural design, integrity, ultimate build-out, character, design, development, and scale. And we will make sure this is our mission. We will do what's right for the community. We will do what's right for the development, and ultimately, we have to be able to pencil out whatever developments we deem necessary in the times that we are living. We are in tough times today. Everybody knows what this country's been going through with the advent of tariffs. Retailers are pulling back new store openings. They're not ordering merchandise for fall and winter. If I fielded one, I fielded 15 calls over the last two weeks. Tenants are slowing down on store construction, material costs, import costs on all their store materials, on their inventory. We're managing that process. We do own one of the best assets in America, and that will ultimately prevail. We will get on the other side of this, but no, we are in a tenuous situation. University of Michigan, their funding, NIH funding has been pulled back significantly. And Stanley and I have worked tirelessly on trying to keep this deal in place. It would have been very easy for them to pull this deal and push it off to another point in time. And because of our longstanding history and relationships, we've been able to keep this deal together and moving forward. They are ready to put a shovel in the ground and announce and do a groundbreaking as soon as we can get through our approval process. And we have been very conscientious and very careful in how we do our planning. I can't stand before you tonight and tell you when all the other components are going to be built around the Michigan facility, but I can tell you, we work on it every day. And when the time is right, a month, a week, a year from now, they will be built out to the highest level of design, amenity, and public use possible. And that is our commitment to you and the city of Troy. We would never do anything, anything, to jeopardize what we have created over the last 50, 60 years with the Somerset Collection. So know that we are working every day in partnership with you and the city to create a better future and to create something that's going to have a longstanding, timeless design and public space associated with it. So with that, I'm going to segue into the presentation. I was here seven months ago. I heard your comments. We've made a few changes, which I want to share with you, and the University of Michigan has made a few changes that I want to share with you. Keep in mind, I want to reiterate again, everything is conceptual. We are here for a PUD conceptual plan approval. Things will change, and they will move around the chessboard. And know you have the best ambassador of this site you could have in your city. So thank you for that. Again, here is Somerset Collection, one of the top eight or nine retail shopping centers in North America. Forty-five percent of our stores are unique to the markets in which we serve. And it's just, it's a one-of-one for retail shopping in the Midwest. Obviously, you all remember the Kmart property, which vacated close to 20 years ago, that had over 4,000 employees as part of that development. That has now come down. We've completely demoed the site. We've done all the remediation of the earthwork and underground work that needed to be done. We have, as I think you all have know, we are in for our site work permit to begin all the underground site work infrastructure and road network to support this site. We continue to spend money and upgrade the Somerset Collection, both in our tenant composition and our interior finishes and amenities that we offer our guests and the region. We have several one-of-a-kind stores that you won't find between here, Chicago, and New York. They're their only stores in the entire Midwest and Northeast part of our country. And we continue to push that narrative as we move forward. As you remember, we were before you, not too long ago, seven months ago, and Michigan was looking at buying that center 7.28 acres, and we had a .57 acre open space that fronted the University of Michigan parcel. One of the comments from the commission was to look at that open space and possibly reorganize that open space, reorganize the parking a little bit. We have over-doubled the size of the park. We have turned it in a north-south direction. We have made it accessible to more open and public spaces as part of the overall development. And as part of that planning, Michigan has increased the size of their parcel from 7.28 acres to close to 12 acres, which include the northeast and the northwest pieces. And I will explain why and how that came about in a couple slides from now. One of our major thesis and one of our major entire strategies has always been to create these public nodes. We want to have these strong east-west connection points and strong north-south public nodes, so the public can enjoy, from a walking perspective, from a respite perspective, and from a central perspective, enjoy the traversing of this property as it faces Big Beaver and the developments that ultimately occupy this site. This idea has never changed. If you remember, on the east-west, number one is that public-facing, public realm area, which is the Big Beaver Corridor right away, which we will enhance and beautify as we did in front of the Somerset Collection. So it's a very walkable area from Cunningham Drive all the way to Coolidge Highway. And that will intersect at the midpoint of Big Beaver with the Piazza and the Central Park. So that strong east-west, north-south theme continues throughout. And we accentuate that, as you see, with the hardscape elements and the open green space areas, that we have now split that parking area into two regions, east and west of the public park. The public park has more than doubled in size, and we continue to carry through our themes for strong east-west connections that tie to the midpoint and bisect this site in a north-south direction that culminates in the Central Park and ultimately to the south facade of the University of Michigan facility. This was the plan that we had before you previously, and you'll see the park in an east-west direction, directly south of the University of Michigan. And of course, we've changed that now. We've split the parking into two, which is bifurcated now by the public park. You can see those northeast and northwest pads, just east of the parking deck and just west of the parking deck, that were going to be parking Phase 1, and Michigan was going to build a 1,400-car parking deck that was grade plus three levels. So it would have been up there about 45 feet in the air. This is all in the planning process. There's been so much demand for space at this facility from the University of Michigan and all their different disciplines. When we really studied this plan in earnest, there was no natural area for expansion. There was no way for them to expand this facility unless they went up. To go up, you got to build the infrastructure on Phase 1. You got to build a parking deck to allow additional levels on deck. It's a mess. So the thought became, how do we take this plan? By the way, these northeast and northwest areas were not part of Phase 1. They were future phases, which Michigan wanted to provide for expansion. And they said, what if we eliminated that deck and surface parked this for Phase 1? And orientated all the development areas facing Big Beaver and had surface parking on this area of Phase 1, which is this view right here. And then, let's allow for the ultimate contemplated planned expansion of this facility, which would allow for two parking structures to then connect to the facility on the northeast and the northwest parcels, which would allow for the expansion of this facility. And that is where they came out in terms of where we are today, which is a 230,000-square-foot Phase 1 development, which will include surface parking to the north, will include over an acre, almost 1.1-acre park you see just south in a north-south direction, which ties into our public space between our food and beverage units, which connects into this public realm space along Big Beaver, north-south, east-west, strong east-west connecting our buildings right here. And it all now ties together. We have our east-west public realm. We have our north-south public park. We have the beautiful area in front of U of M. Their drop-off area is now on the north, which will allow for their expansion of that building in the future. And everybody can provide for the ultimate build-out of this space, so we can have the most dynamic, expressive unit in southeast Michigan. This is what it looks like from the ground. If you're looking north on that public realm space, this is the ground level between the two food and beverage units. This is a little bit of a closer view from one of the restaurants as you bring it down into the human element of this space. Again, great public spaces, great landscaped areas, seating areas, beautiful 1.1-acre park that will front on a four-story University of Michigan health facility. And this begins to show you the elevations as Michigan is now developing and furthering the elevations of their building. This is south-facing. They will have a pedestrian south-facing entrance, but their main drop-off and main entrance will be on the north side, which where all their parking will represent all their customer inflow and outflow. But they will have an entrance for the public on this south facade. Obviously, these parks on either side are not landscaped in this plan, and we'll begin to populate them with beautiful walkways, trees, seating areas, art, and things of that nature. And it will be very reminiscent of Somerset and have that Somerset component to it that really feels like it had lived here for many years. This begins to show you that scale. That center component is up four stories, drops down to three stories on the end. Begins to show you the development. Again, they're fully through schematic and design development. They're into construction documents. This is on the north elevation. This will be their drop-off elevation. This will be their entrance area right here. They'll have multiple entrances into this facility. And this begins to show you what this conceptual plan will look like Phase 1. We get into the materiality. Again, this will be very reminiscent of Somerset. All the buildings will have a combination of brick, stone, metal, very Cranbrook-esque, building on the rich history of this region and Somerset. And everything that's built on here will be through the lens of the owner and developer of this site. And we certainly won't let anything get beyond our grasp. We will have strong controls of everything that goes on on this property, from landscaping to materiality of the building, to common area space, to FFNE and site furnishings, open space. We're 20-some percent open space. I think the requirement on the overall 40 acres is 15%. We're in the mid-20s, I believe, on open space. So we've highly exceeded the overall open space area, and we continue to drive excellence through design, scale, materiality, and ultimately will build what is right for this community and this site, building on the University of Michigan tradition, building on the reach of the University of Michigan. And the tailwinds that that will bring to the entire Big Beaver Corridor is amazing. And you will see the power of the University of Michigan and what it brings to this community when we embark on this project. So with that, I'm going to stop and end.
Thank you very much.
And I want to thank everybody, and Brent and Ben and the whole team for working with us through this process. So thank you very much.
So much, thank you. We might be calling you up in a little bit, but we're going to turn it over to Mr. Carlisle.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Forbes, for that background. I think it's helpful to kind of understand how the plan has evolved from last summer to today. Getting there. But I want to take a little step back, just for the education of the Planning Commission as well as the public. Talk a little bit about process. The PUDs in Troy is a three-step process, and the first step is this concept plan that we're discussing tonight. There are two parts to a concept plan. There's a concept development plan, which is the graphics that Mr. Forbes showed, and that's really, it's a planning document. It really focuses on land use issues, layout, circulation, open space, et cetera. In addition to that and complimentary to that is the PUD agreement. And the PUD agreement is a legal document. It focuses on timelines, obligation, responsibilities, conditions for approval. Now typically, the Planning Commission doesn't often see the PUD agreement. Typically, the concept development plan gets debated, discussed, you know, recommendation for approval, and then the PUD agreement gets drafted as a result of the concept development plan. Because this is an existing PUD, we're doing it a little bit different. We're bringing the PUD agreement with the CDP for the Planning Commission's consideration. In discussion with the applicant, we have tried to be very clear with them is that the CDP really is a standalone document. It should stand alone, but be complimentary to the PUD agreement. And so what we were asking through this process, and we're going to ask tonight for a little more clarification, is some clarification in the CDP, so that as a standalone document and as a Planning Commission in the future, staff in the future, can kick it up and understand what the vision and intent of the development is supposed to be. So we're asking that the CDP really show what is actually being proposed, how it fits the goals and master plan and city policies and the PD ordinance, and then finally, what the site will look at at full build-out. Once we get past the CDP and the PUD agreement, and again, the Planning Commission is a recommending body on that step, we then move to step two, and that is the preliminary development plan. And that's basically similar to what you review as a preliminary site plan. So detailed site plan, landscape plan elevation. So each block of this, other than the ones that are being controlled by University of Michigan, would come into this body for consideration as a site plan. Again, the Planning Commission is a recommending body on step two. The final step is the final development plan, and that is similar to the final site plan and is reviewed administratively. So the Planning Commission has two roles in this. It's step one to consider the CDP and the PUD agreement, and step two to consider the preliminary development plan. Tonight, the Planning Commission is asked to hold a public hearing with regards to the concept development plan, as well as consider and seek a recommendation on the concept development plan, as well as the applicant is seeking a recommendation of the preliminary development plan for Phase 1A. And what that essentially does is it establishes the inner road connections and allows for the grading of the site, installation of those private roads, as well as the underground utilities. This is the first step that's necessary for, if it does get approved, for University of Michigan to start their construction of their portion of the site. So that's the process. So tonight, again, we're just considering the CDP and the preliminary site plan for Phase 1A. Mr. Forbes really did a good job explaining the 2024 concept plan, and this is the 2025 concept plan. I do want to note that there are maximums that were established as part, really it goes back to the original PUD, the pavilions for this, but there are maximum square footages that could be built on this site. So as written, there's a maximum of 500,000 square foot of office, 300,000 square feet of retail, 250-room hotel, and 750 residential units. In conversations with the applicant, they do note that whatever University of Michigan would build would come off of these numbers. So they would be only allocated whatever this maximum is. The other question I've been asked by members of the Planning Commission is, is there a minimum? Are they required to build a minimum number of offices, et cetera? No, there's no minimum. It's just a maximum. So in theory, they could build 500,000 square feet of office, 300,000 square feet of retail, and not build out the rest of what their maximum is. So there are no minimums. They're just the maximums. We do also want to note that there are some changes to the concept plan since the Planning Commission last saw it. As noted, they have expanded the green open space in front of the U of M facility to be more of a multipurpose type lawn area. They have replaced the parking deck for University of Michigan with at-grade parking. They've replaced the mixed-use buildings on the northeast and northwest corner of the 28-acre portion to be at-grade parking. And also, they reconfigured the road layout so that there were two road connections. They actually extend all the way up to Cunningham. Those have been eliminated, and they kind of tee off towards where the Michigan parking lot is located. In addition, the applicant has provided a use diagram for each parcel. It's all indicated on the use diagram, includes a mix of uses, office, retail, hotel, residential, and parking. We do note that many of the parcels include all the permitted uses in there. So there could be, there could conceptually be office on every parcel, or there could be retail on every parcel. It's just, there's a lot of flexibility in the use diagram for where uses can go. We did also ask the applicant to clarify exactly what portions of the property that Constitutional Corporation or U of M was acquiring. Based on the use diagram, that red outline there, it's kind of faint, you can see it on the north end of that 28 acres, that's the 12 acres that we understand that is being purchased by the Constitutional Corporation. However, we do note that there, in the PUD, there's up to a 17-acre allocation for total acreage that could be acquired by the Constitutional Corporation. So there's five acres that are not indicated on the use diagram. So in theory, those five acres could be anywhere on this site, including on Big Beaver. And so we're asking for additional clarification of where those additional five acres would conceptually be that U of M would be eventually purchasing. The applicant has to give us a phasing plan. The phasing plan is by areas of development. It's not necessarily a timeline of what the phasing would be. But Phase 1, as we are discussing tonight as part of the preliminary site plan, would be those kind of pinkish lines. Those indicate the road lines and where the utilities would go. It would also allow for grading of the site. Phase 1B is that yellow-colored, big yellow-colored area, and that includes office, medical, food and beverage, et cetera. We do note that, again, the one-acre area of the parcel will be developed as part of Phase 1B, and that's that center area dedicated for open space. Phase 2 is that little kind of purplish parcel on the east end of the site. That would be, again, a mix of uses as shown on the use diagram. And then Phase 4, or future phase, I forget if it's Phase 3, your future phase is that kind of darker purple color on the north end, includes office, medical, medical office. We've asked the applicant to clarify what future phase means and why it's not Phase 3, or whatever. And the applicant, we're just asking for additional clarification on the future phase, as well as potential timing of when these phases may come into play. We do note that there are standards that the Planning Commission should consider when considering this application. There are 19 standards, and they address issues of consistency with the master plan, appropriate mixture of land uses, is the development a public improvement or providing public improvement or public facility, is there a recognizable and material benefit, is there long-term protection of natural resources, features, and historic and cultural resources, is there an appropriate land use and buffer transition, is there a compatible mix of open space, landscape areas, pedestrian amenities, is there a use of an innovative and creative site and building designs, solutions, and materials that wouldn't be accomplished through a conventional zoning, is the desired qualities of a dynamic and urban environment met, and lastly, does the PUD mitigate reasonable impacts on the transportation system and enhance non-motorized facilities and amenities? So I really want the Planning Commission to consider these standards as they discuss this with the applicant. So again, we think the addition of this Constitutional Corporation or University of Michigan is, to the anchor site, really is a strong benefit to both the city of Troy, residents, and southeast Michigan. However, in our discussion tonight, we would seek additional clarification and understanding so we can really evaluate the CDP as a whole. Specifically, one, does the mixed use of heights, sorry, does the mix of uses, height and layout meet the intent of what we're trying to achieve on Big Beaver? Specifically, is the total amount of surface parking acceptable? Are the two car drop-off areas in front of Big Beaver and the two mixed-use buildings acceptable and good design? Is the overall site amenities sufficient? Are there additional design, landscape, and public art features that should be added to Big Beaver? And lastly, is there additional buffering and landscaping between the north sides of Cunningham? sides of Cunningham and the residential neighborhood to the north? In addition, we are seeking clarification of phasing to better understand and evaluate the CDP as a whole. Again, the applicant should clarify which portions of the development are being acquired or plan to be acquired by the Constitutional Corporation. Clarify if they're proposing to sell any additional portions of the site to a Constitutional Corporation, and then clarify what the future phase term means. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, does the CDP meet the PUD standards of Section 11.03? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone on the Planning Commission have questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Beekner?
Heights of the buildings next to the residential, is that within acceptability?
Well, there is a height, there are, there's a height diagram in here as well. I believe there are three stories adjacent to the north side there, adjacent to Cunningham. You can see, there's a pretty large setback already proposed, I believe 100 feet from the northern property line. I will be, in full disclosure, our understanding is that there, perhaps Michigan was purchasing, considering purchasing those, some of those parcels up there. If that's the case, they would be exempt from the CDP and from site plan approval. So we really wouldn't have a say on what happens on those northern parcels if Michigan does acquire those.
And then landscaping, is it, there's a lot of current landscaping there, but are they adding more?
We haven't got to the details yet of what the density of that landscaping may be. But there is, like I said, as shown on the current CDP, there is about 100 feet of buffer between the building and the property line there.
Thank you.
Can I really quick ask for clarification on what you said? So the, my understanding is that the 12 acres north of Cunningham are under a consent judgment?
That's true. They're also under consent judgment, correct.
And so while they might not come to us or follow the zoning ordinances, they do have to follow, they are subject to the consent judgment?
They're subject to the consent judgment unless it does get amended, which the city is a party to that amendment, would be a party to that amendment.
Okay. And do we know the heights for that, under the consent judgment? I know, I thought it was limited to office, maybe, and...
I don't think that those kind of requirements are in the consent judgment.
Okay, okay. Who was, okay, Ms. Malala-Hallie, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle, a quick question on page 23 of our packet where the heights are mentioned. So the central building is 100, maximum height is 100, and the building to the east of that is maximum height 120, and the building to the left of it is 140 in height. Why is there different measurements on that? It's page 23 in the packet.
Of my report, in my report?
Yes.
Yeah. It's the height that was proposed by the applicant as part of the CDP.
I see. My other question, if I may, is on that colored map where you showed the phases, if I have understood this correctly, and feel free to give me clarity on this, do I see that in the consent judgment area, south of Cunningham, that is, there is a parcel which is under Phase 1B?
Go ahead. Yes, yes. So...
So I'm a little confused then, because are we today looking at the entire 40 acres in front of us? However, we don't know what is going to go in Phase 1B.
Let's pull up real quickly so we know what we're all talking about. So, so Phase 1A are the internal roads, and that's the preliminary site plan tonight as well. Phase 1B is the large, yellow-colored, so that would include the University of Michigan 12-acre park portion, so this, this, and this, as well as Mr. Forbes' portion of the development that he would develop here, as well as this parcel as well. Now, this is still controlled, again, by consent judgment, so this parcel will be controlled by consent judgment. The consent judgment does have allowable building rights to it. So in theory, this could be developed under the consent judgment, what's currently allowed to be built under the current consent judgment, and that could be part of Phase 1B. But yes, as a whole, we're considering this entire 40 acres tonight as part of the PUD.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Lambert?
Okay, thank you. If it's okay, Ms. Dufresne, could I ask you a question about, number one, elaborating more on what Mr. Carlisle said about a constitutional corporation and specifically Item 40 in the amended and restated Plan Unit Development Agreement?
Sure. The term constitutional corporation is just what's applied to, so Michigan Constitution creates something called a body corporate. Body corporate is essentially a legal entity created by the legislature that has its own governing authority. I believe there are only three of them created by this particular provision in the Michigan Constitution, the University of Michigan, Michigan State, and Wayne State. What that essentially means is they are responsible for governing themselves. They do not have to comply with local ordinances, any zoning sign, any local ordinances. They do have to comply with state law, because they're created by the state legislature. So do you have a specific question about, you're talking about Paragraph 40 in the PUD agreement?
To elaborate on, and I'm sure...
Sure. So what, so what Mr. Forbes and his team, they're in negotiations with the University of Michigan, and it might be more appropriate for Mr. Forbes and his team to speak about this more. But what the University of Michigan wants is a provision in the PUD agreement that specifically acknowledges that they are exempt from the PUD agreement. And that's what Paragraph 40 is saying. What we've talked about with the Forbes team is putting a limit on the number of acres that can be exempted from the PUD agreement, because, you know, if we don't put a limit on it, then all 40 acres could put, well, let's not talk about the consent judgment, but the 28 acres on the south side of Cunningham could be exempted. So we've gone back and forth, I think Mr. Jacob is in the audience, it's either 17 or 19 acres, I believe it's 17 acres. And right now, you know, 12 of those are what Mr. Carlisle has pointed out, and then the other five, we just want them to clarify. We believe it to be on the north side of Cunningham, which would be controlled by the consent judgment, but we just want that clarified in the concept development plan. Does that answer your question, Mr. Lambert?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, so my question is regarding something that Mr. Forbes mentioned in his presentation regarding the parking lots to the north of the proposed original phase for U of M. There was reference to it potentially leaving space for an expansion for U of M, and then potentially the flat surface parking being converted to like parking decks. I guess I am just curious, through the PUD process, oh, but I guess if it's owned by U of M, the PUD process doesn't matter?
Right.
I think I just answered my own question, because my question was going to be like, what ability do we have to actually enforce that that will not just stay an ocean of parking in the northern chunk of the lower, of the southern section? But if it's U of M, nothing the city can do. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for the Planning Department? All right. Do we have questions for Mr. Forbes and his team? Should we invite them back up? All right, if you don't mind coming on back up, we might have some questions for you. All right, who wants to kick it off? Okay, Mr. Beekner?
Can you elaborate? I mean, the last design you showed us, we could see townhouses, we could see retail, we could see restaurants. I know that a lot of this, I don't think you know everything because you're figuring it out, so I get that. But I was hoping you could kind of let us know where you're leading, what do you, what things might not happen, what things are you totally thinking are going to happen?
Yeah, so let's, let me make a couple of things abundantly clear. Number one, the south 28 acres, we look at as creating an area that is really around this, what I call the center core, okay? It's this north-south park that bisects into this east-west public realm space, which is the Big Beaver right away. And then interior-east-west, that will be all hardscape, that will connect these multitude, multiple buildings together that will all front on this park space. So we, the plan has really stayed the same. We look at a combination of residential, potential office, potential retail on the ground floor of the building on the west side. That really hasn't changed, and we have multiple layouts, multiple schematic designs, and multiple pro formas and budgets to allow for that. We have a couple of freestanding restaurant units that will have indoor/outdoor seating around great public space that bisects this north-south public realm, and this whole area here has not changed as well. We continue to look at residential living with the potential of first-floor retail and office and/or creative office around that. The University of Michigan building in this center is really a four-story building on the pop-up area that drops down to a three, I believe three or two-story, I believe it's a three-story on either end of that building. So that isn't changing. Public realm, constitutional corporation, that is not changing. That building has been approved by the Regents, and that is the building they will be building. All of this area around it will be developed and controlled by us, and we will build it as the demand and everything else. But we are, we are far down the road on concepting and pricing. We know that once this University of Michigan development starts, gets in the ground, and we groundbreak, the rest of this is going to begin to come clear from our perspective. But that has not changed, our vision and view has not changed since I was here seven months ago.
Can you, can you talk about the five acres that's been mentioned?
Yeah, so, so one of the things that, again, and it's all, it has not been approved by the University of Michigan Regents or Board, but it is contemplated, there could be a potential for, I think it's 4.2 acres on the north 12 acres, that would, the consent judgment would allow for the building of an additional development on that piece. And that's why we've allowed for this constitutional corporation to buy that piece through our negotiations.
Can you talk about the neighbors to the north?
Yeah.
And landscaping, fencing, easements, any, just...
So we did meet, we had a neighbor meeting at Somerset. I don't remember how many people we had there, but I would guess 30-ish people. And the big issue was the buffer in the landscaped area. I can only tell you that we will, since that meeting, we have done a lot to go back there and clean up that area. And as part of our 100-foot setback, we will take every comment into consideration and make sure that we make right by them, and we will make sure that that area has the proper buffering, fencing, whatever needs to be done to create that separation and privacy, so they're not impeded or impacted by this development.
Thank you. My other question, and again, I know this is out in the future, and it's hard to say, but timing-wise, I bet you're going to want to put shovel in the ground soon. I think I understand the phases. Do you have just the idea of timelines of this, the hospital first, and the things in the front of it on the south side?
Yeah, the medical facility. I would like to think that the majority of this south 28 acres is a five-year project.
Okay.
Is it four, is it six, is it seven, is it three? But that's, somewhere in that realm is the right answer.
And the north parcel, is that after that?
I can only tell you that this piece and this piece are being looked at right now for additional uses. And as soon as those things are practical, obviously, we have to come back before this board for site plan approval. And as soon as we can, we will bring those plans forward. But our hope is that all of this, it's obviously been sitting for a long time, and all of this wants to happen within a period of time. Michigan doesn't want to see us under construction for 15 years either.
And I think you figured it out, and I bet most everybody in the room is agreeing that we don't like a lot of asphalt, but I really like your idea of the next phase, and whether that's a few years down the road or longer. I think the idea of asphalt is something we'd like to avoid.
Yeah, as we would too, and let me just...
That's exciting.
No, let me just indicate to the commission as well, our discussion started with University of Michigan. They have, their furthest east facility from Ann Arbor is Northville. Northville's 100,000 feet. Brighton's 250,000 feet. This is, will cover Oakland County. This is their facility for all of Oakland County, and they know day one that they are undersized. This is what's been approved by the Board of Regents, this is what's been approved by Michigan Medicine, and I can only tell you, my intuition tells me, it'll be sooner than later that we're back in front of you. And we would only be remiss if we didn't have a natural expansion for that building. Thank you.
Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. You addressed my questions regarding the buffer between the residence. That's appreciated. A couple little details, and you're a great person for details. Cunningham Drive, right now, on the north side of the mall, is lined with flowering trees, and it's just, you know, it's breathtaking. Would that hopefully be continued across the street into the Cunningham that goes, I mean, it would be just a natural...
Rich, what do you think? We're going to continue the flowering trees on the other side of Cunningham?
Whatever.
So we have, here's what I would tell you. Grissom and Metz Associates has been doing our landscape plan since 1970, since when?
Since the early, before I started.
In the early 70s. We've been to the White House, we've won national awards for our landscaping design, and we look at this piece as a complimentary piece to Somerset Collection, and it will not be treated any different.
Yeah, because that's a natural flow.
It's a natural connection.
Connection, yes.
It's a natural connection. And by the way, George, which, Bush, do we go to the White House for?
Barbara.
Barbara and Senior, yes, Barbara and Senior. We actually won, for our mall in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, won a National Landscape Architectural Design Award. So we will make sure that this piece, and it's being looked at right now because we're in design on it, will have every element of the Somerset landscape elements.
The other element are the art elements, exterior, outdoor art. So do you have any thoughts about that today, or?
That will, yes, I actually, I've actually looked at a series of pieces to be put in the public park that will probably be privately owned. And you probably have two great art collectors in this room, in the Frankel family and the Forbes family, and I can only tell you that the public spaces will be adorned with great artwork.
Excellent. But the one, the one piece of public art that used to be on the site, the double-headed whatever, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, yes, put that back there. Some people are offended by it, but the point is, I just want to know, is that being considered now someplace on the site as heritage or not?
I don't know. I don't know. Haven't given enough thought. Yeah, thank you for that.
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Faison?
I have a question, and the thing goes to the constitutional corporation comment, but for you, Mr. Forbes, you mentioned that U of M is going to build that building, right? That the Regents have approved, and that's what's going to be built. So is there an agreement between your organization and theirs that they've entered into, that they're going to build that building that looks like that with those materials?
We do have controls over what they build, not absolute controls. David, do we have absolute controls? We have review and comment. We have review and comment, and if you know anything about the University of Michigan, their standards are every bit as high as ours. And we went to great lengths to express to them before we entered into this agreement that the materiality of that building has to be consistent with what we've built at Somerset and this region. And if you remember, when we came in front of this council back in, she's 1990, maybe, our whole presentation was based on the Serenin architectural connections that we made from Cranbrook, the Mankato stone, the arched opening entrances, the metal details, the brick color, Cranbrook brownish color brick, the Mankato columns that we have all throughout Somerset, both exterior and interior, and they have picked up on every one of our elements, and they will build something that this community is very proud of. They do not skimp on their brand and their image and who they are as a university and a leading institution, public institution in this country.
And so you hit on what my follow-up question was going to be, because I remember when you were here last time, you said the whole development would have some consistency in design and be consistent with Somerset.
The materiality will be very consistent throughout. It will be stone, brick, metal. It will have very consistent materials.
And the same thing for whatever they build on the five acres that they're...
100%, 100%.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, so I have a question about the publicly accessible spaces that are being proposed for the site, particularly the park. We've gotten many resident comments, but a couple of highlights that I noticed from a few are, you know, suggestions that the farmer's market could host events there, or suggestions that we need a more of a city-center type of build to come out of this. I guess, could you elaborate a bit more on the long-term plans for the park? Because to me, it's like having a flat patch of grass isn't necessarily amazing. Are there intentions to build, you know, pavilions where... Are there intentions to build, you know, pavilions where events can be hosted? Is it going to be like publicly rentable? Will there be a portal that residents can access? I guess, could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, sure. So our whole, part of our marketing team is sitting right back here. So thank you for that question. I just, if you think back on what Somerset has done throughout the history and all the major events that have come to the city of Detroit, whether it was the Super Bowl, the NFL Draft, we have done some of the most incredible attractions, both at Somerset and in the city of Detroit, because of the NFL Draft was held down there, in connecting Somerset to great moments in time. And we will do the same thing here. It will not end up as a, as a field of grass. We have allowed areas and allowed infrastructure for food trucks, for, I don't want to say carnivals, but for sophisticated type events that will pull the community together. If you remember years back, on the 12 acres to the north, we did an Avril Lavigne concert, for any of you that remember. We set up this whole elaborate stage. Avril Lavigne was the hottest, I don't know if any of you were there, it's the hottest act. She goes on stage, it's not 15 minutes in. Tornado warnings and sirens are blaring, 50 mile an hour winds come in, blow the whole canopy off the stage, the whole place has to evacuate. The point of that is, our team and our group of people, which we have four of them here, we probably have a team of 12 at Somerset and corporately, that we have had to talk long and hard about how we activate that space, change it over through the course of the year. So what's pertinent to spring is spring, what's fall is fall, what's summer is summer, and what's winter is winter. And whether that's ice igloos and, and restaurants that pop up and these ice igloos that are heated are the hottest thing with restaurateurs around the country, they do it in all the great tourist destinations in Salt Lake City and Aspen, Colorado and all these other communities. We will make sure that we activate this space and this, this area will be active and will be a central gathering point for us. It's very important that we do that.
Ms. Malala-Hali.
Piggybacking on what Commissioner Fox asked of you, how much acreage is that park area?
Well, I think it's 1.0, just under 1.1.
Just under 1.1, okay. And I did see in the packet that there was an area that was a fountain.
Yeah.
Okay. And where exactly is that fountain to the?
Haven't finalized it, but right now, it kind of shows right between the restaurants as you enter the public space. So the 1.1 is not even including this green space between the food and beverage or this fountain area here, which is part of that east-west connection that will connect kind of, listen, when we look at architecture and you look at Somerset, we went to great lengths, and that's why we went to three levels on Somerset North. We wanted that building to be totally symmetrical. When you look at architecture across the country and the world, the best thing about good architecture is symmetry. You have to have symmetry. It aligns your eye, it creates order for the consumer, and it creates an understandable order that people look for on a consistent basis. The worst thing you can have, especially in the shopping center business, is long end courts and side malls. So if you go to Somerset, Saks, Neiman's, everything's on the main street, 600 feet. The north side, Nordstrom Macy's, 700 feet. Where does a skywalk hit? In the dead center middle. So you are orientated at all times to where you are parking onsite or grade, I'm sorry, grade or, or parking deck within any three levels of Somerset North or two levels of Somerset South. So there's always order to everything you're doing. That's why we started this whole plan with that node plan. Let's create the nodes. Let's create the east-west, north-south connections. Let's create order and good architecture and everything else will, will flow from there. And it's just simple. I had a great architect tell me once, Mr. Forbes, when in doubt, paint it white. Don't make it too complicated. The answer's right in front of you and a lot of times it's simple. Simplicity is genius. So let's come up with a simple plan, let's orientate people in an east-west, north-south direction, build everything off of that, create order and good architecture, and we're gonna be great.
Couldn't agree more. Symmetry is really a good thing. I wouldn't discredit that. However, what are the other three circular slash rectangle spaces that I see that Abbott's, the Big Beaver?
So truth be told, those have not been worked out. These are, these are planned right now to be drop-off areas, to Portica share drop-offs on these buildings. But I can only tell you that they have not been worked out in any plan form whatsoever. And remember, there's a lot of planning that will be involved, and you guys will get another look at that when we come back before you.
Sure, absolutely. One last question if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Just give me an understanding, in, from the 2024 plan to 2025 plan, why were the parking decks scrapped and why did University of Michigan go for surface parking?
It allows for the future expansion. Without that, the deck gets in the way of their future expansion to be able to tie into the main facility.
But this way, we have also lost an opportunity in connecting this area to the mall. Remember, we talked about when you were here, is if there could be a crossover, which allows for a seamless flow of people coming into University of Michigan, seeing whoever they need to see, and then if they have some time on hand, they grow over the crossover and go to the mall. So that way, we have them in this space. And you know, as, as well as anybody in this room probably, that shopping and healthcare centers are it. No matter how worse the environment gets, there will be some shopping, there will be healthcare that will definitely be going, right?
Yeah.
Why not the connectivity?
So, and I think I talked about this last time, there's only two places to connect, Nordstrom, which they had no interest in connecting into their building, and this parking deck. Now, you have to connect, if you're gonna connect to a parking deck, you have to connect at a specific level. And history reporting will tell you that when you're beyond 200 feet from an entrance, so you gotta cut it off at 200 feet, and that only accounted for, let's say, on the second level, like 150 parking spaces. So you really have to evaluate, who are you servicing with that connection? How are they getting there? Are they gonna walk across a parking deck 400 feet to get to that connection and go across? Or are they gonna get in their car or other forms of transportation to get across the street? It's not to say it'll never be done. I can tell you that right now, it is just not in the plan. We've looked at it 800 different ways. Today, it is not in the plan to do it. Now, will that always be the case? I can't answer that. It's always at the top of our mind, we're always challenging ourselves on that, but it is not in the plan today.
Okay, thank you.
Before, before I call on you, because we're on this topic, I wanted to ask about that question that she had, not about the connection to Somerset, but we talked about the north, sorry, the east, the northeast and the northwest that are now all gonna be surface parking lot. And you had a sort of a pop-up showing different phrases about how they're going to develop it. There we are. So it went from surface to a building directly north of the U of M building. Go back up that one, take those buildings down really quick?
Oops, sorry.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, so when you added them, you add a building right north of the U of M building?
Yep.
And what I believe are two parking structures right and left. So I think the question is, at least my question, maybe it wasn't yours, is why are we not building? It, it doesn't, it doesn't change anything. They're ultimately want them to become parking decks, because if they're gonna eliminate all that surface parking, they need the parking. So for me, we just dug out that Kmart headquarters, we dug out all the parking lot, and now telling us that you're gonna go and resurface parking lot is unacceptable in my mind. I can't even imagine it. I would, I would really like to see the parking decks go in. It's such a waste to put that in and then say, oh, in three or four years, whenever, which we don't even know, it's one day gonna be parking structures. That seems to me that that should be a phase that, that begins faster.
Yeah, I mean, I don't control the timing of that. I can only tell you that the ultimate build-out is in everybody's best interest, including ours, and hopefully, the University of Michigan sees it that way. I don't control that. What I have in front of us today is a 250,000 square foot, quarter of a billion dollar development that will bring a lot of business to this area, this region, the Big Beaver corridor. And let me tell you, we've spent a lot of years looking at developments, and I'm gonna show you a picture here, Rob, if we have it. Do we still have that old Kmart aerial on air? No? Okay.
Down in the side.
Underneath it, okay. And really, when you look at it, the only place you're really seeing is the parking is from Cunningham or Cunningham Drive in the back, and everything else is faced with buildings, which is the Big Beaver and the Coolidge frontage. And if we do our job, you'll barely know that, that, that parking deck is there. And then before you know it, it'll become vertical.
Before we know it. All right, Mr. Tagle.
I was very excited when you were in front of us, whatever, a number of months ago. I'm not as excited tonight. What I've learned since then is about the control the U of M has over this development. Now, you say you are the stewards of this project, but I really don't know how much control you have. Putting surface, just to expand on that, for example, I am so against surface, I mean, where's the sustainability? The architecture that you're talking about, it isn't in surface parking. I don't care how many trees you plant around it to hide it, it's not there. Is an option to build the decks now. Leave the surface parking in the, right, directly north of the, of the medical building, build the decks now if they need more parking. But I just think that, 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 it's like, we're being asked to look at the front half of this property, and you're telling us how beautiful it's gonna be, it's gonna mimic the beauty and the, and the, the expression that Somerset brings, and that's great. But this is one property, this is one piece of property in Troy. And I really find it troubling that when we're asking for information about how this development, whether it's your half or Michigan's half, is gonna be developed, we really can't get a clear answer. You have done a great job telling us how you are gonna develop your half. Michigan can do whatever they want to do, whenever they want to do it. Is that correct?
Pretty much.
Okay.
John, I can tell you, we've been sitting here for 20 years. 20 years, we've been sitting here with a vacant million-square-foot building.
I understand.
For 20 years, cutting the grass and paying our taxes. We'll sit here for another 20 years, and this can sit vacant. We had the number-one public university in the United States of America come to us that's a $4 billion annual medical facility institution to plant a flag and spend a quarter of a billion dollars on this development. Do you know what that means to a community and a city? You know how many cities around metropolitan Detroit would, would die to have someone like this come in and plant their flag in the middle of their development?
They don't have the footprint that you have here.
I understand that.
So that's why they're not gonna, that's why U of M isn't at their doorstep. They're here in our doorstep, in your doorstep.
That's why we're in front of you tonight, John.
That's right, that's right. And, and your point about the, the magnitude of the money being spent and invested in here, are you saying that a surface parking lot is better than building the decks today?
What does building the decks do for you today? More concrete, more height of, of, what does that do for you today?
Begins to define what's gonna happen in those two corners, because right now, it could say surface parking for infinitum, I don't know how long. And surface, we're trying to get away from surface parking. We're going through the city right now and allowing property owners to build in the outlots because there was too much surface parking built back in the 70s and the 80s. We're trying to get rid of it. We're trying to be more sustainable community. And I don't think U of M is stepping up to sustainability when they say, by the way, how many acres of asphalt are they talking about back there?
I don't know what it is. Six acres, seven acres?
It's a lot, yeah.
Seven, I think.
Yeah, so it, it's just, you know, it's, it's disappointing to me that this is what's coming back after what you presented to us at the first time. Don't get me wrong, I think it's a great project. I want to see this project go through, but I'm telling you, from my professional opinion, there's, there's a problem north of where your development is.
If I may, I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on that. For me, I'm really excited. I think the city of Troy would love to have the University of Michigan come and anchor here, and there's a lot of great stuff to this project, and you did a fantastic job presenting it. There's three real overarching concerns though for me. So the first one is the fact that we're talking about a 40-acre parcel where 12 of those acres are under a consent, consent judgment, and then we're asking for 17 of the remaining 28 acres to be?
12 on the south side of Cunningham, 12 of the 28.
But that wasn't stipulated in the PUD?
I think it is.
So the remaining five that they're asking, it's stipulated in the PUD that it will only come out of the consent judgment and not from?
That's not entirely clear.
Okay.
I mean, it needs to be clarified.
Okay.
That's what they're saying, but it needs to be.
Okay. So, okay, so, so then we're talking about, now I gotta redo my math on the spot, but basically, so 28 and they're gonna take 12. So the remaining is what we're really talking about. So all of this negotiation and all of these ideas and designs that we're talking about are really only on that remaining balance, that south, south, south side.
Correct.
So it makes it difficult when we're going through the PUD requirements. So for example, someone asked you about how we're respecting and protecting the neighbors at the north, and you talked about the landscaping and the buffering and all that. If U of M owns that property, we can't promise anything, okay? So that's just the fact of it as it is currently being presented to us, because once U of M owns it, we, they don't have to abide by anything of, of our agreement or our zoning ordinances. So that's one of the three issues that I have. The second issue has to do with the uses. In general, I'm okay with all the uses. I, I, you know, when we get into the more of the details, I can tell you a few of them that I have questions about. But in general, the way it is written, when you, when you look at what you're asking for, if you wanted, I know you're not gonna do this, but the way it's drafted from a legal standpoint, you guys could put offices on that entire remaining, every single development could be an office, because that's how it's written. So we're talking about having two restaurants there on Big Beaver. If that's what's going there, then I'd like to see you stipulate that. It shouldn't say that an office could go there. So there has to be a little bit more specificity on the uses for us, so we know when you're talking about, oh, we're gonna put residential and we're gonna have maybe, maybe a hotel and some offices and whatever, all in retail. We talk about maximums, there's no minimums. I think in a previous version in the pavilions, they, they had something called like residential formulas. So there could be formulas that are in there, so we would have some concept and commitment, really, that there would be mixed use that in, that promises a certain percent of residential on that, on that area. So for me, it's a total free-for-all when it comes to the uses, and it's not enough assurances to the city. I mean, I love what you're showing us, and if it happens, great, but from a legal standpoint, we have no assurances that that's gonna actually be, be developed in any way. So that's the second. And then the third concern overall that I have is really with respect to phasing and timing. As you're aware, it is part of the PUD process that we be informed of the phasing and the timing. And, you know, we're not asking for a tiny timeline or something super specific, but we do need to have a, an overall expiration. If you don't break down and, you know, break ground in five years, it expires, or you have this many years to accomplish this phase. There has to be some timeline with actual dates that, that keeps the process going. We've already sat on this, as we've all talked about and we all know, 20 years of, of nothing. So now that we're on the brink, we want to make sure that we move forward and both parties to this negotiation, you know, this is a win-win for everyone, that's, that's the idea. So the way it's drafted doesn't feel that way to me. It feels a little bit one-sided, if I'm being honest. So those are my three overarching concerns. Mr. Beekner.
I've got three questions, and I'm gonna take a tangent in a slightly different direction. Mr. Frain, there is a lot of legal wording in this, as I read it. I just wanted your opinion, coming from you, where are we legally on this?
So Mr. Jacobs is in the office, yeah, I said that I did before, in the, in the, in the room. Audience, thank you. So he took what was the existing PUD for the pavilions of Troy, and he has amended it and, and restated it. Yes, there's, there's quite a bit of, of legalese in there. Mr. Jacobs and I have gone back and forth for probably a year trying to tighten up that, that language a, a little bit. But as you all know, this is a negotiated process. So if there are things in the agreement that you don't agree with, that you don't, that you want to see stated differently, if you want to, this is the opportunity for this board to make those comments and, and get those things out there.
Thank you. Mr. Forbes, I'm taking a few steps ahead, but I'm sorry, I'm gonna do it anyways. To the, to the east?
Yeah.
Is that something in your sights someday? And to the south, on the other side of Big Beaver? Is that something you would, aspirations, I guess is the word I'd use?
You're talking about this piece?
To the east, to the west, I'm sorry, to the west.
Oh, this?
Is that something you're interested down the road? And to the south, on the other side of Big Beaver, where Kroski is?
I mean, we got to get through this first.
That was a bad, that might have been a bad question for me, I'm sorry. I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
Mr. Beekner, that's all controlled by consent judgment, everything on the north side and then the west side of Cunningham.
This whole area here is covered by consent judgment.
So we're opening up a whole can of worms that we don't, like Mr. Forbes said, let's get through this.
That's fair, that's fair. My last comment, there's trust and there's faith. And I have faith that you guys are going to do what you're saying you're going to do. If you could ask for two better partners, I can't name them. And I'm from here, and I've spent a lot of time working in business, and part of our job is to come up with criteria, make sure the residents are taken care of, make sure our city is as good as it can be. I can't pick two better groups, I can't. So I'm a fan, I'm in, and that's what I'll say.
And please don't mistake it as mistrust. It's not really about that. It's just about, you know, when we're negotiating and we're creating a document, I just feel like you could stipulate some of the things. If you know there are going to be restaurants, tell us it's a restaurant and stipulate to that. We're talking about, it does really still bother me about the surface parking lot, to Mr. Tagle's point. You could build the parking structures for the University of Michigan and get those going for them and work out some deal. We're not negotiating with the University of Michigan. You are, but you have that ability to come back to us and say, okay, now I'm going to promise you that we're going to get those parking...
Can I share a little story with you?
Sure, of course.
The year was 1991. Somerset North was teetering on not happening because we couldn't get the funds to build the shopping center. We created the DDA with Frank Ursenecker and his team. It's a $16 million DDA, 16.4 million. It's $4,000 per car to build that $4,000, $4,000 car deck at Somerset North. Everything was fully negotiated and fully approved. The project doesn't happen without that $16.5 million DDA. Frank Ursenecker knocked on my door the day he was taking it in for final approval. He says, I need your word, this deal doesn't happen without that money. People think you're going to build it either way. I said, it doesn't happen without that DDA. It was the best investment the city of Troy ever made, because they bet on us. And if you're going to bet on anybody, you're going to bet on us. I can't tell you what Michigan's going to do or not do. I can only tell you, they're going to build a four-story building, they're going to spend a quarter of a billion dollars, they're going to do right by all of us as we are. And we're going to have to have a little bit of faith in each other, more than hope, we're going to have to have a little bit of faith. I can't tell you whether we're going to have two restaurants or four restaurants out front, but we're going to have food and beverage out front. And we're going to come before this board and ask for site plan approval. And if you don't like the drop-offs, we'll work with you to change them. If the circulation doesn't work, we're going to work with you to change them. Can't tell you whether we're going to have 200 units or 400 residential units, but we'll have residential. Can't tell you whether we're going to have 50,000 feet of retail or 200,000 feet of retail, but we're going to have retail.
Well, would you be willing to put in some minimums?
I was told we amended the existing PUD to make as little change as possible. We amended an existing PUD. We took, the only change we made was we took the $500,000 retail, made a $500,000 office, we took the $500,000, I'm talking, took the $300,000, we took the $500,000 retail and $300,000 office, and we flipped them.
Yeah.
And we kept everything else the same, for the ease of being able to go through the rest of that process.
But you did remove the residential formulas and things like that, which...
When you say formulas, the formula was, is I believe, a trade-off formula. If you didn't build residential, you could trade it off for additional retail or additional office. That was the formula I think you're referring to.
Yeah, I wasn't a party to that. I just was skimming through it, and I thought that there was some sort of a, okay, so regardless of what that is, you know, I guess what I'd be looking for is some sort of commitment to a mixed-use development with residential and a minimum amount of residential, so we had a little bit more...
I got to be honest, I haven't thought about that for one minute. I mean, that just was never part of the dialogue between the city and us.
Yep, Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I think what is important to throw out there is, I believe a lot of us really like this development. Me personally, I like this development to the point that I would love to see it happen. I do understand the chair's point regarding guarantees that it will happen, regarding the lack of control that we have over the northern, I'm just going to say central, because north of Cunningham. The central portion, you know, once that goes to U of M, the city just loses the ability to influence that. And I don't think it's anything against you all as a development group or even against U of M. I mean, life is, you know, it's very chaotic right now. You referenced yourself, University of Michigan has had funding impacted by recent federal events that, quite frankly, none of us in this room can control. There's always the risk that, you know, U of M builds the building, they lay the parking lot, they lose all the funding that they would have had available to continue building the rest of the project. So I understand the concern from that extent. I do also understand that if we make the decision to recommend approval and city council, let's just say, decides to approve everything tonight, it's not necessarily like a card where you get to go run around and build whatever you want now. You know, you're going to keep coming back here, you're going to have to keep up a rapport with all of us, have to keep up a rapport with the city. You know, there are multiple checks that'll be put on to your group, continuing into the construction, all the way through the completion of this project. So from that standpoint, where I can understand both the risks and I can understand the safeguards that do exist, I think the critical thing for this is just looking at the broader overall spirit of slash uses. And I think where I come down to is, I really like this, I would be in favor of putting this through. I do agree with the chair that if there's a way to put in language that kind of puts a few more guardrails in on specifically, like I would hate to see that residential turn into office for whatever reason, you know, down the line. I would appreciate those kinds of small changes. But overall, I do like this, and I would like to take it forward.
Mr. Faison?
Did we confirm, I know we talked about it, did we confirm that the additional five acres for U of M is going to be north of Cunningham? Or can it be anywhere?
The northwest.
The northwest, yeah.
That northwest corner.
Did we confirm?
No, it's not confirmed.
We did not.
Mr. Jacobs is in the office, oh my God, in the audience, and he can answer that question. I'm not sure that they can make that commitment, sitting here today. I just don't, I don't know that, but...
Because I echo a lot of Mr. Fox's comments. What I see, I like, but there's still that uncertainty of, will even the southern part be built as you have it portrayed?
Appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Savadah.
Before it falls off the plate, it's a public hearing.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Forbes. We're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Okay, so anyone who would like to come up and speak on this topic, we just ask that you sign your name and address, and you'll get three minutes. They're going to keep time here. When it goes yellow, you have a minute left, and then when it's red, we'll cut you off. So is anyone here to speak on this project? And also state your name for the person.
Mary Ellen Barnan.
Okay. We won't start your time until you...
They say, don't start my time.
Yeah, no, we won't start it until you're signed in.
I wrote it out this time, because I tend to, very passionate and tend to speak a lot. Although I have to say, I feel at a disadvantage to not have all the information you guys had, because some of my notes are maybe inapplicable from what I heard today. So I feel like I should get it readdressed, but we'll address that matter. And then just to speak to a topic that, when I spoke to the commission today, which is, again, not part of the thing, we, the neighbors in the 300-foot radius, we have not been notified of any of these meetings. If we were not calling at all times, we would not know about these meetings. And it's my understanding that if you live within a 300-mile, or not 300-mile, 300-foot radius, we border it, so I'm zero foot, we are supposed to be notified of these meetings. We have not been notified of any of them. And I even sent my information to Mr., I don't know how to say your last name, to Don, Savadah, Brent.
Make sure you're speaking into the microphone, yeah.
I actually spent, at last meeting, I brought this up as well, and I sent my information to him. I still did not receive a notice for this meeting, nor did my neighbors that I spoke to. So they're already breaking the rules. Okay, I'm sorry, I got to finish, and I will speak. And I'm very nervous, so, sorry.
The agenda packet that we all receive, it's posted on the website, the city website, on Friday morning, so it's, that's what we get. We don't get anything different, is my understanding.
Okay, well, I'll call the office and get more clarification on that, because I have now a lot of things I need to clarify based on this conversation. Okay. So, good evening, my name is Mary Ellen Barnan, and I've been a resident of Troy since 1992. I'm here to express serious concerns about the proposed development near the east side of Coolidge. First, increased foot traffic worries me. I believe a fence matching the one around, which is not in the new site plans, the data center is necessary to prevent unwanted access to our neighborhood. Second, the 100-foot easement is not adequate. The green space on the east side of Coolidge is considerably larger to act as a buffer. It's actually over 15 acres. While I'm not asking for that much, I do believe the current proposed easement is inadequate. Office space and industrial HVAC and higher traffic creates more disruption than the previously proposed condos. This alone creates the need for a wider buffer, even more critical for noise abatement. I suggest using landscaping to help absorb the sounds from the HVAC and general activity. Based on the current renderings, the design seems that our view would be a solid wall, which most likely will contain utility meters, dumpsters, and whatever else they don't want to be seen. We shouldn't have to look at utility meters, dumpsters, or junk collection zones. This area should be clean and thoughtfully screened. Forbes and Frankel have proven anything not visible to their crown jewel, Somerset Collection, is not important to them. And based on their track record, since taking ownership of the property, this area will not be a concern to them. Even the proposal stating they will, pardon me, even the proposal stating they will use current trees as ludicrous, as they have not been maintained and are diseased. The proposed lighting is another issue, it is very bright and impacts nearby homes. Forbes stated it would be the same as what's at the mall, and they are extremely bright. The current yellow-tone lights are much softer. Bright white lighting, especially near backyards, is not acceptable. Lastly, again, Forbes-Frankel's track record hasn't been great regarding the back property. Choosing to focus on the area around the Kmart headquarters, which is visible to their Somerset Collection. They've neglected the property for years, they have recently cleaned it up, it feels minimally, it feels more of an effort to placate us before presenting to this committee in an attempt to look like they are going to be attentive. If this commission's site plan does not include stipulations for this, I cannot anticipate anything other than having a dumpster behind our home. Is this community's responsibility, is commission's responsibility ensure we are able to maintain the current safe character of our neighborhood? I respectfully ask this commission to push for real barriers, fences, and more landscaping, lighting, and larger easements to protect our quality of life.
Thank you.
They've done minimal. I mean, I appreciate what they did, but it was only after 10 years of neglecting us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Firdar Sarikan. I would like to say that before any approval given, I think we need to make sure that there is some sort of transition and buffer zone between the neighborhood and the parking lot, or that 40, 50-foot tall buildings. Otherwise, we will be just looking at these tall buildings from our backyard. That's, and also the streets right now, they are quiet, and we enjoy it at night and during the day. But I cannot imagine, like, at night, looking up and seeing the office, you know, lights and everything else. Right now, I believe that there is a building just behind the Beechwood Club. That building is pretty close, and when you look up, you definitely see that and the lights. And we do not want the same thing behind Babcock. I believe that that will also reduce the value of the houses. So nobody wants to buy a house and just behind it, there's this whole big building. At one point, these buildings are coming like 80 feet close, so that is way too close. There is, also, I do not understand that in 40-acre, one-acre park in the front of the hospital, is that enough? And there is no green space in the back, like, north of Cunningham, there is no green space. So that's not acceptable, in our opinion. So I can just write my...
Yeah, please, sign in, thank you. Is anyone else here to speak about this?
One thing I would like to say on behalf of our neighbors, first, we thought that this meeting was on the fourth or fifth, and after it moved to 12, and now, last minute, I learned it was the 22nd. So I believe that most of the neighbors don't know about this meeting. I had to call several times to get the correct date and time.
Good evening, William Frohling. Just a point of a clarification, is the body this evening, just considering the roughly 12 acres that the University of Michigan is carving out of this larger parcel land, the concept land?
You're asking?
Yes.
This is about the whole 40 acres?
Okay. So are you approving the residential and the multifamily?
We're not supposed to be doing a back and forth where we're answering questions. It's, you're supposed to do, you know, you've got three minutes to tell us something.
Okay.
Your public comment.
Okay, we can't ask questions?
No.
No? Okay, all right.
Well, you can ask questions during your public comments, we'll do our best to try, hold on, let me pause it, your time's not ticking away. You can answer questions, we can do our best to ask questions, we can do our best to answer questions. It's not a dialogue, it's not a conversation back and forth. You have three minutes to make comments, to express concerns, to ask questions, we can do our best to answer the questions. Some of the information, we'll try our best, but it's not a back and forth conversation with the chair.
So you'll answer the questions after I sit down? Is that what, to your best of your ability, or somebody on the board will?
The chairperson runs the meeting.
Okay.
So you can address your comments to the chair, and she can act accordingly.
Okay. All right, then I'll just give you my questions, and you can act accordingly. So if you're only talking about the 12 acres that the University of Michigan is carving out of this piece, I agree with some of the comments that some of the commissioners had here about getting some kind of a timeline for development of the areas around the University of Michigan Hospital. We don't live too far from here. I know it's not the developers' fault, we had to look at an empty, ugly Kmart development for 20-some years, and we certainly don't want to look at a medical building and a sea of asphalt parking lot, and then nothing else happens around it. So I support some of the commissioners' comments that they do need to have some kind of a timeline for the rest of the development. My other question is, to the board, is, will there be other public hearings on other phases of this development? That there'll be a public hearing on? Or are you approving, you know, the entire concept plan showing up on the video screen? And if that's the case, you are approving all of that, then I would, my comment would be, I feel that it's way too intensive a development for, I can understand the medical facility, definitely need for the area for that. I'm not excited about looking at seven- and eight-story apartment buildings and 500,000 square feet of office space. I think it's just way too intense for this location. There's a lot of residential, there's plenty of office in the area, plenty of commercial in the area, and the mall right across the street. But hopefully, those other phases, there'll be additional public hearings, and then we'll be able to give you comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would now be the time to address the questions, or wait till the public hearing's over?
What would you like to do, Madam Chair?
We'll wait till the public hearing's over, in case there's other questions. Is anyone else here who would like to speak during the public hearing? All right, seeing nobody, we're going to close the public hearing. To answer the first question, the PUD is talking about all 40 acres, but the 12 acres that is being proposed to be sold to the University of Michigan and up to an additional... additional five acres, so a total of seventeen acres, they are exempt from the PUD. So we have no control. The, the agreement that we're talking about does not apply to those seven, to, to anything owned by the University of Michigan in this case. So we have no say over it. So that's part of the conversation. And whether or not there will be public hearings for each individual site plan, I'll let you handle that one.
Yeah, as Mr. Carl explained in his presentation, it's a, it's a three-step process. The first step is concept development plan approval. We're considering the, the entire forty acres this evening, not just the twelve acres. That's, that is, that is a constitutional corporation. The, each, each phase of the preliminary development plan, which is essentially site plan review, there'll be public notification, public hearings at both planning commission and city council level. For this concept development plan, the applicant seeks a recommendation from the planning commission. The planning commission is not, is not an approving body. The planning commission is a recommending body for planning unit developments. So the next step, if they were to receive a recommendation this evening, or a recommendation in the future, the next step would be a public hearing by city council. So there'll, there'll be another opportunity for a public hearing.
Okay, I think that answered-
Is that it?
I think so. Yeah, that was all I wrote down. The other one was-
Was an opinion.
Was an opinion about the density and the intensity. Okay, Mr. Lambert?
I think there was a question too about lighting and the city's standards as far as lighting, to make sure that it doesn't shine into people's backyards, as Mr. Savin could elaborate more on that.
Yeah, this is, this is concept development plan approval, so we're talking about an overall concept. We'll get into the details about, about the lighting levels. We do have, we do have lighting levels. The, the, the point is, the, the point of the, of our lighting standards is that they not, the lighting not go on a budding property, does not blind drivers on the rights of way, the, the hotspot under the light doesn't exceed certain standards, the poles aren't too high, et cetera, et cetera, all in the, in the effort to minimize the effects of light on all properties, but especially a single-family residential.
And would those standards apply?
They'd apply during, they don't really apply now, because we're talking about a concept. They will, we'll, we'll review those standards on a case-by-case basis during the preliminary development plan approval process.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Tagle.
But they don't apply to the U of M property?
That is correct. Zone, zoning ordinance standards do not apply to constitutional corporations. That's correct.
So the consent judgment applies to the University of Michigan, so if they were to purchase one of those northern five par, you know, five acres on the north, that's governed by a consent judgment, they would be bound by that, but not our zoning ordinances, which would incorporate lighting, buffering, transition, those things?
That's my understanding, but I'm sitting next to a city, a city assistant city attorney.
The consent judgment does not cover any details, I mean, just so we're clear.
Okay.
It covers essentially, you know, how many square foot of office space is left to build on those twelve acres, so, and what the zoning is. And of course, the zoning back in the nineteen-seventies, when that consent judgment was first entered into, was office or office mixed use, OM. So BB zoning didn't exist.
Right.
So the standards that we're talking about today really are applicable, because they didn't exist when the consent judgment was entered into.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beekner?
My home is in that picture, so I, I live here too, so I'm with you guys. I've lived there for twenty-eight years. I've watched Kmart headquarters be built as a kid. I watched it go down. I watched it get emptied twenty years ago. I bought some furniture from it. Obviously, making sure our residents are taken care of is a high priority. I think everybody gets it. Those of us that have friends, I have a lot of friends on the north side of the north part of Somerset. I've got friends there. I've been in their homes, I've been in their backyards, and it's well landscaped, and it's well taken care of, and it has been for decades. I think I've said my piece, but I, I think we're blessed to have someone that is willing to do this for our city, and that's where I stand.
Mr. Faeser?
Yeah, a question for the city attorney. Now, you've mentioned several times, a number of times, that our ordinances don't apply to a constitutional corporation, but you did say at one point, the state does have some legislative oversight of it. So I'm just wondering, in terms of the, these things we're talking about, protecting the neighbors, right? Light was the specific example. Is, is there any kind of state requirement?
Not that I'm aware of. I do know that the University of Michigan does have its own building and design standards that it, that it follows. I looked at those online. I did, at one point, ask Mr. Jacobs if there was an opportunity to have those standards at least incorporated into the PUD agreement. I don't think we landed on an agreement in, in terms of that. So there aren't planning standards that I'm aware of for, under state law, but the University of Michigan, as I said, has passed its own set of design and build standards that they follow.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I guess one aspect of this whole situation that is, has been danced around but not directly stated. So, University of Michigan is ultimately a public entity. We vote on all of their boards of commissioners, every presidential election and midterms, I believe. Either way, we elect the university board commissioners. While I do definitely understand the concern of leaving, like, the sea of asphalt, like, absolutely, that is a, a concern that I have, and I think it's fair to try to address, I do also want to note that there is a level of accountability that we as voters and residents have on the university as well, in the effect that if, you know, if the university comes in, and let's just say they do something terrible, and everybody's losing their mind, like, they lose voters, they have public hearings that voters can speak at, you know, there, it is ultimately as much of a public body as we are. So, not to say that it'll be absolutely, you know, perfect, but it, there is recourse in that regard if, once we hand the land off to the university, there are actions that we're not necessarily in favor of. It's not as strong as our zoning ordinance, obviously, but there is a further conversation to have.
We're not handing off any land.
Sorry, if it is sold to the university.
We're not selling anything to the University of Michigan.
My apologies.
Just wanted to make sure that the messaging is-
Ms. Malala-Hali? This is a question to Mr. Frain. Will it be wrong, or, or, I shouldn't use the word wrong. Can, can we get some kind of clarification from the developer regarding what kind of, what kind of communication they have had with University of Michigan in, with regards to City of Troy and the planning commission, requirements of how we would like a development to happen in this area?
I guess I'll defer to Mr. Jacobs on that point, but, I mean, they don't want to be a part of the PUD agreement. And, I mean, if, they have, that's, they have set forth, they've, through their attorney, through Mr. Forbes' attorney, they have said they don't want to be bound by the terms of the PUD agreement. So if Mr. Forbes has an agreement with the University of Michigan and how the property's going to be developed, that's a question you can address with them, and they can clarify, but right now, there's, there's no control that, that the city has with the University of Michigan.
I guess I am just thinking, from all the discussions that we've had, and, and what the applicant has mentioned, I'm just, I'm just thinking, even University of Michigan obviously want to raise above the standards of what they would like to build here in this location. They would be cognizant about some of the requirements that we have, and PUD is a negotiation process, although they are not going to be part of it, but I'm sure the developer would have had some kind of an indication, providing them, that this is what they would like to see. This is how they, so would you like to do something with regards to that, whether it is the residence, whether it's the parking lot, whether it's the buffer zone, stuff like that?
I, I guess I'm not following, I guess I'm not following what you're asking. You can ask that question to Mr. Forbes, and he can clarify with respect to what his agreement is with the University of Michigan. If you're asking if, if the City of Troy should insist on what Mr. Forbes puts in his agreement with the University of Michigan-
No, 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 not that, not that. Mr. Forbes, if you don't mind coming up to the lectern, please. During the course of your conversation, and I'm asking this because we want to, we want to know why this six-acre asphalt is now sitting in front of us, which is, I notice in the, in the, is, it's not on the Big Beaver Road, it's not facing that, but still, it's a large, large slabs, slabs of concrete there. What kind of discussion have you had regarding what a PUD process for a City of Troy looks and feels like, and what kind of, if not a commitment, an understanding you have received from them?
Well, let's understand, when I was before you last time, the entire north part of that was going to be a parking deck.
That is true.
That is the middle six acres, or whatever it was. It was going to be great, plus three levels, which would have been all concrete, poured concrete, of four stories. Keep in mind that the northeast, one-point-seven acres, and the northwest, two-point-one acres, I think it's a total of three-eight, were not part of the initial phase. Those were going to stay, those were just going to be parked initially. If you go back to our old thing, they were initially not part of Phase One. They were going to be parked. University of Michigan had an option on those two pieces from X amount of months after they opened the main facility. So they controlled those two pieces of land. When we got into the ultimate discussion, this building, this four-story, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot building, did not allow for a natural expansion area. Then they said, let's eliminate the deck, let's surface park Phase One. It will allow us to add an expansion on the north side, build the decks on east and west, connect them to our expanded facility, a lot like what we did at Somerset South, and that allows for the ultimate expansion of this facility. Keep in mind, the only thing they have approved, and the only thing we're before you today, is the approval for University of Michigan to build a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot medical facility on this piece of land. That's what we are talking about today. This allows for the future expansion of Phase Two, and the ultimate building of two vertical parking decks that will tie into that expanded area and the main facility. The other thing I want to give you some comfort is, we have a declaration on these, that govern these twenty-eight acres, that Michigan is bound by as well. It's a declaration of how this property's going to be operated. Within that declaration, first-class, quality, review and comment by owner. So we have given them a lot of input on the design of their building. And that's what the, kind of the skit, sketches and the imagery that you're seeing today. The other thing I want to point you to, and you should think about doing, is, they have a two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-square-foot facility in Brighton. They have a hundred-and-ten-thousand-square-foot facility in Northville. Talk to those communities, see what kind of partners they've been in those two communities. They're constitutional corporations in Northville, it's a constitutional corporation in Brighton, and see what kind of partners and stewardship that they've provided to those communities as well. So we have been involved in their design, their layout, their concepting, and we will continue to be, and we have a strong voice in that.
That's good to know. Thank you for, for explaining that.
Have our attorney, have you sent that declaration to our attorneys for review?
I don't know that it's for your people to review. It's our internal document. I mean, it, it governs the twenty-eight acres of our development, so if there's any other parties to this declaration, they just can't go off and do whatever they want to do. They got to live by that declaration, which we put into place.
Right. I, I understand. It's, it's just that we're, we're negotiating with you, and you're negotiating with them, and we don't know what you're negotiating with them.
It's no different than our negotiations and our REA documents with our department stores and our retail leases. You're putting your faith in us, that we're going to build a million-four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot regional shopping center. You don't know what those facades are going to look like. You don't know what kind of stores we're going to put in there.
Okay. I mean, I, I see it as a little bit different, but, I, I mean, it's our job to, to review a site plan. It's not our job to determine what store is going to Somerset. That, that's your job, and, and that's why we trust you to do it, and you've done a great job.
And again, we're here for conceptual plan approval, and we'll be back in front of you for individual site plan approvals for each one of these parcels.
Right. I, I just wish that there was more specificity and assurances. Go ahead, Mr. Tagle.
You know, we've been told that the University of Michigan's architect is into construction documents for this building. I would like to see, and, and maybe we could invite the University of Michigan representatives here, to show us what their master plan looks like, not only for this building, but for those two outlots, and the potential five-acre outlot on the north side of, of Cunningham. Because somebody has thought about that, and has put pencil to paper, and has come up with some level of development. We've not seen anything about that, and I guess because we really don't have any control over what they're doing, but I've heard it said that they're a high-quality institution, they have standards of their own, I'd like them to come in and show us what they're really thinking, and what those standards are that they're going to meet. I mean, and again, we don't have the control, but I'd like to see what their plans are.
Right. Go ahead, Mr. Con.
Yeah, I, I like everything south of Cunningham. I'm, I understand about not building the decks immediately, because they'd be probably vacant for years until the center part is developed, the second phase of the Michigan, the clinic, or whatever you want to call the, the health center. But north, I'm a bit squishy on that one, because, you know, we don't know what those five, what five acres are there. We don't, I don't really know. Out of those three, three, you know, white diagrams on one of your plans, on the concept plan, it doesn't show what one, one of those three is U of M. And then, the other part is, just what Mr. Tagle's talking about, okay, so what are their standards for setbacks from that neighborhood? My concern are the neighbors on that, that north of Cunningham area, and it's just, I just like to feel a little more solid about what's going to happen there, in the future. It doesn't have to happen now, but it's in the future, that's all.
Keep in mind, that twelve acres today is governed by a consent judgment, which the city has party to. So any changes from what's approved today, which is basically office or medical office, we have to get all five parties to agree to a change on that, from medic, from office or medical office, to anything other than that. That's what the consent judgment allows for today, and the city is party to that. So it's us, it's the city, it's GM Equities, it's Farbman, and it's the data center. There's five parties to that consent judgment, which includes Sheffield Office Parks, the data center, the twelve acres, and the City of Troy.
Okay. But that's still said, I don't know what Mr. Tagle's saying, is, U of M has standards, and if they're going to, you know, take five acres there, what are their standards for setback, mainly from those residential homes? That's all I need to know.
Madam Chair, can I-
Yes, please.
-jump in on that? So, the consent judgment, and I don't have it in front of me, but can, can someone put up page forty-four from the packet? So if you look at the very top portion of the twelve acres, the northern twelve acres, oh, can you make that bigger? You see the green, the green strip, that, that buffer area, if you will, between the parking lot and the, the homes? Does everyone see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, sure.
So that area, that buffer there, is dictated by the consent judgment. The consent judgment carves out, there's two separate parcels. They're labeled C and D in the consent judgment. So that is your, that is the buffer. That is what the consent judgment is calling the buffer. That's why there's no parking lot there, that's why there's no building there. That is, that is your buffer, and that is what the consent judgment says.
And that's about a hundred feet?
I don't know what it is.
It is a hundred feet.
Is that what it is?
A hundred feet to residential eighty. A hundred feet here-
Right, and then yes.
And eighty on here, yeah. It's, it's a hundred feet here of setback, and it's eighty feet here of setback.
Question for the attorney. So, if U of M purchases or owns whatever five acres there, they have to still abide by the consent judgment, or not?
The consent judgment is different than the PUD agreement. The consent judgment is a court document, that's, it's still covered by, I forget who the legacy judge is, in Oakland County Circuit Court, but yes, whoever owns those, those twelve acres, in addition to all of the other acres, acres on the, on the south and west, west side of Cunningham, north and west side of Cunningham, that's all controlled by the consent judgment. So yes, the University of Michigan, in my opinion, would have to be bound by the terms of the consent judgment.
Okay.
But keep in mind, the consent judgment, I just manage expectations. The consent judgment doesn't go into the level of detail that the PUD agreement goes into.
I understand, but I'm, I'm concerned about that setback, that's-
That is, what you, that green strip, the church, and then the, the pointers that Mr. Forbes has, that is your setback. That is what's in the consent judgment.
All right, and U of M has to abide by that consent judgment?
In my opinion, yes, they do.
Okay, I just want to-
I don't know what U of M's position is, but-
We'd sure like to hear that from U of M, then.
I believe that, I don't want to speak, but it's a consent judgment. It's, it's a, it's a court-ordered document that's controlled by a judge, a sitting judge in Oakland County Circuit Court.
Okay. And it's limited to a setback. It's a distance, it's a setback.
Yeah, it's, it's labeled parking and greens, green belt, and something else, but it's called out. There's a, there's a, it's called out specifically in the consent judgment. And that's why the documents that you see there have that green-
The green belt. The green belt, okay.
That's in the consent judgment.
Good. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Forbes, or should we let him take a seat?
Mr. Forbes, did you want to say something about the setback? I feel like you wanted to say something about setback.
No, I was just confirming that our council thought that the consent judgment governed on the setback.
Is it your thought that that would stay?
It's our thought that it, and I don't even know that it's part of the sale, to tell you the truth. I think it's not part of the sale to that, to that building. So I was just checking on that.
Oh, that's an interesting point. You don't, you don't think that those two parcels, those
I don't think that that piece is part of the sale.
Okay. Well, that would be helpful in the concept plan.
Behind the church, they're bound by the consent judgment. So that piece, that's that 80-foot setback. They're bound by the consent judgment.
But I thought the five, the 12
It's like 4.8, it's like 3.8 acres, or 4 acres, or whatever it is.
And you said it was that left piece north of Cunningham?
That left piece, that northwest piece.
Okay. Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Forbes at this time?
I wanted to show you one, then. Okay, I was looking for something else. Okay.
Yeah, is there anything else you wanted to?
It's in the other.
No?
Oh, it's in the other. It's
If you're looking for something
Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody, that everybody understood that the renderings I was showing of the Michigan plan are the, these are the materiality, this is their renderings of where they are in their design. So it's brick, it's stone, it's glazing. I mean, this is what they're looking at right now on the building. This is where they are in schematic design. These are not our interpretation renderings. So this is, this is an advanced, it's in schematic, this is schematic design of their architecture.
Mr. Forbes, are you at a point where you could speak with Mr. Jacobs about putting those in the concept development plan as an exhibit to give this board some sort of assurance on that point?
That this building will what, be representative of these?
Right. Representative, like you're talking about materials and, I just don't know what you're, where, how far you are in that process with the University of Michigan. But to Mr. Tagle's point, if you have these renderings, and this is what you're pretty certain Michigan is going to build, what's the harm in putting that in our PUD agreement?
Again, and I understand your point. I don't know what they would agree to or not agree to. I would tell you that we could probably get some level of language that these are representative in substantially conforming to what, I could explore that. I can't
I'm not trying to make it more difficult for you. But you've heard the body talking about some assurances. The PUD agreement is one thing. The concept development plan is another, and the documents are supposed to be working together. So I don't, I mean, where you are, you all are negotiating with University of Michigan, we are not. And they, University of Michigan has injected itself into this agreement process because they want certain language in it. So if there's, in your negotiations with the University of Michigan, trying to get them to agree to give this board some assurance, I think that would go a long way. I don't, we didn't answer right this second, but I just, that's where I think this body's head is at. And again, I don't want to speak on their behalf.
So in our presentation today, where we showed the materiality, something like this, is that what you're looking for? Where they would be consistent with materials of this nature?
No, I'm looking for
I understand. When I say you, I'm speaking collectively to the board.
It would be something along the lines to, you know, to, yes, I guess it's a short answer.
Mr. Tagle.
I appreciate the renderings and the intent of the renderings. But to me, that's, that's eye wash. And if, as you said, they're in the construction documents on this building right now?
They, I think they are. They may be, they may not be. They're either through, in design development or CDs. I can't tell you where they are on that
Okay. If they're that far into it, then these materials have been selected. But what I'm really interested in is what is their forethought down the road with these parcels that are labeled as asphalt parking lots, or they're just blocked out as, here's a five-acre parcel north of Cunningham? I'd like to understand. I know very well that any architect that University of Michigan hires is thinking beyond this building. University of Michigan is thinking beyond this building. I'd like to see what are their thoughts. Again, we don't have any control over that, but I would like to see what they have thought out and how they want to develop these pieces. I would like to see them in front of us and show us what their thoughts are. Would that be a fair request?
I don't know whether they will or will not do that. I don't know.
Do you have any reason why they wouldn't want to do that? And, you know, we talked about faith and trust and all of that. To me, this is just
This is a $7.5 billion public institution. I don't think what the answers I'm going to give you are going to satisfy you tonight. I'm telling you what I know today, that it were before you, for the, to put this to planning council, to recommend this conceptual development plan and PUD amendment for the development that we know today. And this is the plan in front of you today. I cannot answer for the University of Michigan. I know what's been approved by the regents and the board, and that is what is in front of you today.
Do you know what's been approved by the regents and the
Yeah, I know that
Just this building, or the plan for this development on this property?
I'm not going to get into semantics and speak for the University of Michigan. I'm not in a position to do that. I am a developer. I am a steward of this development, and I'm bringing forth something that I believe in will be accretive and beneficial to the city of Troy for this property and this community.
Have you seen more than what you're showing us as far as what Michigan's plans are?
No, zero.
I can't imagine the song and dance you've gone through with Michigan and how this is going. I can, I can imagine what it would be like. Healthcare is one of the biggest industries on the planet. University of Michigan's one of the best universities on the planet. Forbes and Frankel knows what they're doing, and their team. And in our city, in Oakland County, I mean, who doesn't think this is going to rock? I mean, it's gonna. Seriously. How blessed are we to have these guys in here? I get that we want to have some details, but I'd hate to see them walk away. Do you want another 20 years of blight? I don't want that.
I mean, I guess, I guess where my head's at is, I feel like we're looking at something. We all like what we're looking at. We feel like we're all together on the same page. So let's just get it down into writing and have a document that represents what we're talking about. I just think that there's, it's just not quite there yet. That's, you know, my background is, I'm an attorney, so I think a little bit like that, but that's how I'm looking at it. I just don't feel like there's enough assurances. I'd like to see more specificity in the document. I mean, I've made it clear. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, I think there is ultimately a meet in the middle between the two stances. I think it's possible to provide more encouragement, more support, more, you know, solid guardrails. But it's also important, you know, we can also accept that there are some things about this project that we won't be able to control once this is in the university's hands. I think there is, once a sale is made to the university from the folks we are making the PUD agreement with. I agree with Mr. Beekner, and I believe with the rest of the board, that everybody wants to see this happen, for sure. I think it's just an ironing out the details sort of step that we're at, and getting, you know, the improvements and the little bit more that we need, and then us having realistic expectations as to how far the developer can go. So I think there is a meet in the middle between the two ends of the spectrum that we're at.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Forbes, or should we let him take a seat? All right. Thank you so much.
I'm going to conclude with one thing. And I will tell you that we've spent a lot of time on looking at this development. And if anybody wants to stand in my shoes and bring this project forward, and know what the carrying cost and the infrastructure costs to build the underground, the retention, the detention, the utilities, and the road network, in not knowing what's going to happen with the other 25 acres on this project, be my guest. I'll give you a pen, and you can write the checks. Other than that, we're the number one public university in this country, is willing to put a flag in the middle of this project, in the center of Troy, on the gateway to the city of Troy. So there is no great windfall on the rest of this for Nate Forbes and the Forbes Company and Frankel. So the choice is in your hands. Michigan can come here, they can go somewhere else. Ultimately, it's up to you. I'm here. Hopefully, you'll see that as a positive for the city and this community, and we can work forward and work together. And if not, so be it. So thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, Mr. Lambert?
I was looking through the packet, and I didn't see any kind of a resolution. Is that
I couldn't find it either.
Oversight, or?
Yeah, no resolution is there.
I'm sure Mr. Forbes would like us to take action tonight, but we don't have anything in front of us to look at, so.
I think before, before we start our deliberation, or if we want to extend our discussion, we should have a resolution on the floor. Oh, yeah, it's not there. It's not in its usual spot. You never make mistakes, right?
I'm happy to go to my office and print one, print out a draft that's on the G-drive right now.
We probably need, I mean, I don't know that anyone can do it without
Without it, yes.
I'm trying to think, just reading the, what's on the agenda, I don't think.
Let's do it. Let's do it the right way.
All right. Ms. Dupree, do you mind if we begin talking before we get a resolution on the floor?
No, it's fine.
Would you like us to wait? All right. So what is everyone thinking?
I could start. I would, the only swishy part is that, like I mentioned earlier, that north 12 acres, and knowing that U of M's going to occupy five of that on the far west side of that, I'm at this point willing to approve the concept. And when the preliminary development plan comes before us again, that's when we can bear down more determined as far as did U of M come in and talk, well, they've been invited. If they can come in and explain what they're, if they're going to hold to those setbacks or not, I'm willing to go ahead with and move it forward as a concept plan right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tagle?
Yeah, I suspect most of you around this table think that I'm being a hard guy about this. All I'm asking to do is to see what part of the players on the other side are going to do. It's that simple. We have no control. They're not, they come in here and they show us something. We're not going to be able to say, can you move the building? Can you change the color? I just want to see what their thinking is. And for me, personally, to not ask that question, to not look at that, I don't think I'm doing my job here. Because right now, we're closing our eyes, and I would say it's a fairly safe bet with the participants that are on the team that are going to develop this. But I have to ask myself, what's the hesitation to come in and show us some drawings? I, there's a, I can't find it right now, but there was a comment in our packet tonight from the petitioner, and I don't know who wrote it, but said, if you want to know about this, read the, read the consent judgment. What? What, that to me is just an offensive comment to this board. This is not how we work. And so I want to work with this developer. I want to see this project go. But what I, what I'm asking, I think, is really low-hanging fruit. And I don't understand, if there is resistance to that, I don't understand it. Why wouldn't you want to come in and show us all these grand ideas and grand plans University of Michigan has for these, for this property?
Thank you. Ms. Malala Hawley?
So let me first begin with saying what is great about this project. I personally like the improvements that are done, which is the Central Park area, the green, the green space, the potential for having, as the applicant said, food trucks, outdoor seating area for the restaurants, promenade-like setup, and many more recreational spots. The sticking point, as Mr. Tagle, Commissioner Tagle pointed out, we are today approving the concept plan plus the Phase 1A, which is the internal road system here. But it's the whole 40 acre, but we don't have a clear picture of all 40 acres. We have a clear picture of what is south of Cunningham, but what is north of Cunningham, we don't have a picture. If we are going to go in for all 40 acres, then let's see what all 40 acres looks like, or at least an idea in the future, what is being thought about. That is definitely something that I would like to see, and also probably look into whether so much of parking will, will it be required? Is it essential? Six acres, they said? It's a lot of, lot of asphalt. Is there a way for us to kind of look into that a little bit more? I know we may not have much to say on that, but once it gets sold, that is. But it seems like a large, large landscape of asphalt. So that's still a sticking point for me.
Mr. Vazan?
So just to Mr. Tagle's point, I think it would be great if U of M would come in and present to us their plan. But I'm wondering if the applicant can deliver U of M. And I'm also wondering if we've heard from the applicant what their plan is, or at least what he thinks their plan is, right? Build the building, build the extension, build the decks. So is it a validation of that we would want, or to hear it from U of M?
I think he's asking
Are you asking me?
Maybe I'm just making the comment. Yeah, but I'm asking you, because you
I'm asking to see what U of M's thinking and planning is down the road. They don't do developments like this in a one-phase thought process. You don't do Phase One and then think, oh, what are we going to do for Phase Two? They, believe me, have thought this through. And all I'm asking for, show us what you think you're going to be doing down the road. That's all I'm asking.
And again, you don't think that's what we've seen with the expansion to the north and the deck?
We've seen nothing. We've seen nothing but a colored drawing, two-dimensional drawing. And again, I'm not asking for eye candy here. I want to see how they, how they're going, how are they going to use these, these buildings and these properties? I mean, to Ms. Malala Hawley's point, that's a lot of parking. I'm not even so sure if this Phase One building requires that much parking. Maybe it does. I don't know. We'll never know, because we have no way of, you know, applying standards that we have in our ordinance to say, with this type of facility, you need this many cars. Okay? So all I'm asking for, and really, it's not, this is my world. It's not that big of an ask, because they've thought about this. Believe me. It's not like they're just thinking in Phase One.
Mr. Beekner?
Mr. Carlisle, can I ask you a question? So it's been said that the city, they can do whatever they want, and the city can't say anything, but there's state standards. The states, it's my understanding that state standards and city standards are similar. Is that true?
No. City, the, well, I can't speak to state standards. I can, the city standards are, we have our own adopted ordinance with issues of landscaping, lighting, setbacks, height. The state standards do not go into that specificity as all. They're more construction code and building code requirements. Fire code, they're life safety codes. They're not necessarily zoning provisions.
So there's some of it, but not as much as I thought?
I'm not sure there's any sort of zoning provisions at the state standard.
Gotcha. My second thing, and John, I respect you a lot. You've done this for a long time. You've been around customers at every level, I bet. And there's customers out there who don't want to do it. I'm not saying they won't, and maybe they will, and that'd be great. But what if they say, I'm not interested, and they walk away? I'm not excited for that potential.
Why would, why would they do that?
I don't know. You've done this longer than I have. I've got
I've never, I've never worked with a client that wouldn't be willing to share their ideas and their vision with an approving board, never. Because what they want to do is they want to excite us. They want to show us what potential they have down the road. Keeping it a secret and saying, nope, we're not going to show up. You don't have any control over us. We're going to do what we want to do. To me, that's a red flag. And I've never worked with a customer like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox, you had your hand up before. Is there something you wanted to say?
Yes, yeah. I guess to the points that have been discussed, I wouldn't say that any of us individually are being particularly hard or particularly soft on the developer. I think it's important to acknowledge that the eight of us all come from different corners of the city. We all come from different backgrounds, different educations, and we all have a different level of risk that we're willing to, you know, apply to such a situation. I can absolutely understand, like, wanting more from U of M. And I think if we end up working out that way, or we postpone, or we do something to request that they come in, you know, alter in, you know, ultimately, that's a decision, just like any other. In terms of where I am personally at, I think the big thing that really kind of eased my concerns is the recognition that all of these individual properties will need to come back, at least from the portion that's remaining owned by the applicant. Those will come back to us, those will get voted on by us hypothetically, city council, depending on the circumstances that lead to that. Which obviously, yes, leaves a big question mark with what happens on the university-specific land, you know, if, you know, once the sale is processed and that is owned by the university. My concerns insofar as the university and what the university may do, I think ultimately they're a public body that understands that they're accountable to people, and I don't think they're going to drop a pile of garbage. I absolutely understand the concerns, and if we end up motioning delay, that absolutely makes sense. But for me, I am personally at a point where I think U of M, we can put a level of trust in them, as they are public.
Just to clarify what Mr. Fox said, I'm seeking clarification from Brent, or, you know, Mr. Savadah or Mr. Carlisle, if you guys would listen for just one minute about what Mr. Fox said in terms of having a level of comfort, because they're going to be returning to us with site plans, at least for the bottom portion. But am I correct that they could bring us, they could just keep bringing us office buildings, and we wouldn't be able to say anything about it because it's approved, and we can't be like, no, that we already have enough office buildings, we want residential?
Yeah, so, to be clear, every parcel that is not under ownership of Michigan would come in for plan commission review. You would apply the adopted PUD amendment provisions to that are PUD ordinance. This is typically the stage where you kind of hammer out some of those details at a higher level, such as what the uses are, potentially what minimum or maximum square footages would be allocated. If this gets passed as is, you can't, you then apply that, what is passed as a PUD agreement then gets applied for the preliminary site plan and the final site plan approval. So, if there are specific provisions you're concerned about, this is the time to address them, because you can't address them after this, after this has been adopted or approved by the city council.
So, that's sort of my level of comfort, and this is what I've been trying to say. I don't want to say I'm less concerned about the University of Michigan property, but because we don't have a say in it, I guess I'm focused more on what we do have control over, and the fact that we're talking about it, it's a mutual negotiation we're doing together, and, you know, we've done these before, and we know that we've gone back and forth for years to get it right, and we've ended up, if you looked at the start to the finish, it was a million times better after going through a process of back and forth and trying to come up with the best product. I don't think we need years by any means, but we're, I feel like we're talking about the same thing with the applicant, but I don't see it in writing. And I don't know if I would call it a red flag or not, but it doesn't sit well with me that we don't have it in writing. I'm willing to allow flexibility. I don't need to be told that this has to be residential, this has to be a hotel, this has to be a restaurant. But I'd like to know that on this complex and these 16 remaining acres that we have control over, that we're going to have a few restaurants, we're going to have some residential, and there's some formulas, there's some square footage that we can put in there that requires certain things. So, when we say we're all talking about the same thing, it's backed up with numbers, so when they come back to us, we can fit in the pieces. We can give them flexibility. But I just think that we have to have something to go on, otherwise they can come back and we're going to be like, oh, I guess we should have, we should have done that earlier. I don't want to be stuck there. Mr. Fox?
I very much appreciate the clarification from Mr. Carlisle. I have much more of a thought at that point, that I would like to see some limits to make sure that this is not just a bunch of office buildings that are built. I do, with that point clarified, think it is important to make sure that this is a mixed-use development that includes not just office. And I think for the portions that are not being sold to U of M, that is something that is reasonable for the applicant to be able to respond to and produce our legal things in writing in the PUD agreement that will help assure that this will remain mixed use.
So, we should have a resolution on the floor. Is anyone prepared to put forth a resolution so we can continue our discussion?
So, this is a resolution that was written from the standpoint of recommending approval and with, subject to the following, and it's blank. So, is someone going to forward this?
Well, I wasn't going to do it, word for word.
Do you want us to read?
If someone's using this template, the fourth paragraph is a repeat of the third paragraph. So, strike out the fourth paragraph, and the paragraph after the one you just struck out, whereas the concept development plan contemplates the development of up to 12 acres, I believe they want, they're seeking 17 acres.
Yep.
Well, if I may ask for clarification on the resolution.
And this is only a sample language, you can use it, you don't, you're not obligated to use it. As per every development application, the resolution that's provided is for a courtesy, you can use it or not use it.
Well, then, just for clarification on a hypothetical motion to postpone this to a later meeting, I basically, hypothetically, you would just skip all the whereas, read the top bit, and say, be postponed with the request that the applicant do X, or come back with X.
Well, it would be your resolution, and you'd be the one who came up with the verbiage, but all I would say is, if you do choose to move forward a resolution for postponement, you should provide as much clarity as possible, so that the applicant is well aware of what the ask is from the planning commission.
Right, and to piggyback on that, I mean, if there are details that you want them to put into this plan, we need to know what those details are. It can't just be, you know, ambiguous, I mean, we need, if you want them to give you clarity in this agreement, you need to give them the clarity that you're seeking, because right now, I don't really know what you're, I don't really know what you're asking for.
At this point, though, I know we talk about putting the resolution out there first, but when we're about to list things, it would help to have the discussion first, so we could all weigh in on what we think those points are.
That is true.
Right, but you can put, we've already gone down this road so far, so you can continue with the discussion, but you could put forward a motion, discuss the motion, and then amend the motion, but, the resolution, but go ahead. Continue down this path, and that's fine.
All right, Mr. Vazan?
Are you going to do the resolution? I had a question.
Yeah, I think we're going to discuss a little bit more, so he has more to go on with the resolution.
So, there's been conversation about having more specificity in the PUD agreement to assure that it's a mixed-use development, which I think makes logical sense. But I did hear the comment earlier that this was an amendment of a PUD agreement, and only like a couple of things were changed. So, was that first? Well, so, here's the question, here's a very specific question. Did that expired PUD amendment have a requirement that this be a mixed-use development?
Yes, that was a mixed-use development.
All right, thank you.
I think, can I clarify what you're saying? So, there were a lot of changes made to the, to the Pevillians of Troy PUD agreement. Mr. Forbes was referencing, they only, the square footage allotments, the 500,000, the 300, yeah, those, we made, they made very limited changes to that. The documents been very.
Soon as you corrected me, I knew I missed one.
Never, Mr. Vazan.
Go ahead, Ms. Malala Hawley. So, to my understanding, for the resolution that is going to be proposed and later on voted upon, I know for sure that we have two things that are a sticking point. One is, we do want University of Michigan to give us their conceptual idea about what they propose or plan to do with the areas that are going to be under their control once they get it, once they buy it. And two, mixed-use development, a specific understanding of where things might potentially go, if it is office space, if it is residential, if it is restaurant space, restaurants, restaurant usage, or any other usage that is being planned, with some kind of an understanding about those buildings that will house them. Anything else that I have missed, so that I understand it clearly?
Yes, Mr. Lambert?
We wanted to include some language in there about some kind of a green belt protection for the neighbors on the north side of the property.
That would.
That's, I really don't want to go down that road, because that's covered by the consent judgment.
So, those are the two points, then?
Well, I mean, if we're, if we're, there are a few uses that were, I mean, I saw in that list, let me see if I have the.
A bunch of uses.
I don't know that I wrote down the page, but for example, it had drive-through windows at a financial institution was on the list, schools, universities, trade schools, repair shops. I would want to confirm that those are non-automotive. And then it did say multifamily, but it said townhomes and single-family. I'm not sure that that's something that belongs on this site. Senior housing, independent, yes, but I'm not sure about nursing congregate. So, there were certain things that were listed that I would like to see removed off those lists. Those were the specific ones, so I don't know if you took note of those, but if we're going to be specific like that, those are, and then the other piece that I, I don't know what you guys all think, but that was something that I had brought up the first time when he came for feedback, about the green space in the center, that corridor, and huge improvement, although it used to be south of the University of Michigan building, that sort of got eliminated, and it came down like this in an acre. We're talking about, I mean, we don't really know, but the number was thrown out, you know, 750 residences. I think nobody would disagree that there's going to be thousands of people at this site on a daily basis. So, one acre in the big scheme of things is actually small. And given the mass surface parking that's north of the building, I'd like to see that center take two lanes out, two lanes of parking on both sides, and make it almost double in size, that big green space in the middle. There was a lot of talk about what can be done in that green space, and I don't think it can be done, and it's all wonderful, great ideas, I don't know that it can be done on an acre. If people are living there, they're going to be walking their pets, they're going to be having their kids playing on that, and then also all the people from around Oakland County and Troy who will be visiting the site. So, I'd like to see that expanded as well. Anyone else?
I got a question, yeah. I've been looking through all the plan drawings that show what will be placed in those specific little areas, like, let me get to the drawing here, I was panning through them all rather quickly, but let me just bring up that plan view. There's multiple plan views that are outlined view, and they'll list on that, whatever that area is, they'll say office, they'll say, they'll include office, restaurant, they say all those things in that same area, whereas we, I'd rather see something that says, well, this is going to be, who's for, I don't know, let's pick one of those areas. This is going to be restaurant and community engagement with the park, and, you know, it's, why is office listed on every single one of them in addition to restaurant? And I just wanted, it would be better if we had one plan, and there's multiple ones, some just show restaurant, some show a whole multitude of things, and I just wanted to.
Yeah, this is the view where it shows.
Everything is listed there.
This was sort of my point, where I said they could come back and do office everywhere. On other renderings, it shows these are food and beverage.
Correct, yeah.
So, I'm not requiring that they specify everything today, or whatever, when they come back, because maybe they want to do the residence here, and then they switch it, that's fine. But I think that the assurance that I'm looking for is some type of formula, some type of minimum, basically. We have a maximum, they can't do more than 500,000 office, whatever. But why are we not saying, at the end of the day, you have to have X number of residences? Whatever number it is, but if that's one of the things we can do, and we're all thinking it's going to be mixed use with residential somehow, there has to be a minimum then.
Yeah, and I don't know how to specify that minimum personally.
Yeah. Sorry, Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I do have a little bit of a thing about that. I want to see a little bit more specific as to where office will be or where restaurant, because that also dictates the aesthetics of that building, of the elevation, of the movement, of the traffic, everything. So, if you say office and retail, office and retail, retail space will look a lot different. And if you say office space, and that will look a lot different, I don't want us to be then wondering, why did we end up with a very drab outside area or a promenade-like setting, which is not what the concept, what we were envisioning it to be? So, a little bit more specific. Okay, offices, if it goes, it will only go in this block. Retail slash office may be in this block, something like that, to just make sure that the aesthetics of what has been shown in these pictures, which is wonderful, beautiful setting that has been shown to us, I'd like to see that in vision, in reality, that vision in reality.
I just want to.
Mr. Krenn?
Ben Carlisle raised the point. So, if we approve this concept, we lock in, we can't make changes later than for the preliminary site plan?
Can't make changes to the PUD ordinance, which specifies a lot of the issues that you're raising with regards to minimums.
So, we've got to specify those in the concept, because otherwise, we can't change those later in the.
This, this process is typical of how a PUD goes, right? This is a negotiation between the planning commission and the developer. The developer wants as much flexibility as they want, rightly so, and the city wants as much assurances as they can get without stifling development potential. So, that's, I think that's where we're at. And so, I think tonight, this is good discussion about what specifically would you like the applicant to come back with that would give you a little more reassurance about what would actually be built here, and allow, but still allow flexibility for the applicant to move forward. But my point is, Mr. Krenn, is that if this discussion doesn't happen at this level, and we approve the PUD ordinance, we would then apply the PUD ordinance and the concept development plan, whichever form it gets adopted at, and apply the preliminary site plan to that. We can't, we can't then decide, oh, I wish we would have done this, or I wish we had done that, or I wish we would have thought that, because we can't amend it after the fact.
So, that kind of changes my attitude. My thought originally was, well, let's just get this concept moving forward, but if we're locked in on a vote for the concept, and we don't specify, it's going to be, this zone is going to be retail or restaurants, or it could be an office, we don't know, because both are specified in that zone, then I'm, then I'm, I've got some angst with that. Again, just what Mrs. Malala Hawley was saying, is we want to see the flow of things, not, and, yeah, unless, I'd like to see something more, more specific than, it could be this or that. That's my thought.
I just want to comment on that and weigh in on that. I do agree, I do think, though, that they know their business, and that we should give them flexibility. I do think that there are going to be certain things they'll be willing to stipulate, like the restaurants on Big Beaver, I'm assuming will be restaurants on Big Beaver, and hopefully they come back and let us know that, because that sort of creates the movement around the green space and all that. But to tell them that this side has to be office and this side has to be mixed use, they might have reasons that come up that they want to move things around, and I don't want to handcuff them on those types of issues. Again, as a general concept, I want to be assured that when they showed us all those pictures where there's mixed use, and there's high-end condos, and there's, or whatever kind of condos, living space for seniors, whatever it is, all of those things we saw, I'd like to see them represented on a piece of paper, so we're assured that those are going to be built. They don't have to promise us an exact number, but a minimum and a maximum help us form a better idea of what we're getting ourselves into. So, I'm a little bit split on that. I don't want to be too restrictive, but like I said, I want some assurances. Okay, we had a lot of hands. Mr. Beekner?
I know that the eight of us have some wisdom and some background, but I don't think we're the right people to tell them the minimums are the. we're the right people to tell them the minimums or the maximums. I think they've been listening to every word we've been saying. I think they're the ones who know the market. I think they know the idea that they need to come back to us with some minimums and some maximums. We're not going to do car shops, we're not going to do this and that, we're kind of leaning towards this. We can't handcuff them, you're right on. I'm going to bet a lot of money that you guys are ready to take what we're saying and take it to the next level and bring it back in the near future. Am I correct?
Well, there hasn't even been a recommendation yet. Ms. Malala Hawley?
So here's my thinking. Page 36 of our packet lists all the retail uses for up to 300,000 square feet. There are a lot of ones that they too may not be thinking of putting it in there. Case in point, there is professional convenience, well, not that, sorry, hardware stores. There is somewhere I saw about, where did it go? Well, anyway, there are some ones that I saw here that are not. I know in the past, when we were talking about PUDs, there was an applicant who was before us for the PUD, and he or she, they or them, did definitely say, for sure, we assure you, we are not going to go build and put an auto repair shop there. For sure, we are not going to go do this. We don't have that, but we have a huge list of things here. I trust the applicant, I'm not going to say no to them, I trust them, but at the same time, how do we get an understanding of there won't be repair shops, there won't be trade schools, there won't be drive-throughs?
It's not in the list. If it's not listed in this list, then they're not going to do it, they won't, they can't...but there is.
But she's looking at the list.
On page 36 of our packet, it talks about trade schools.
Drive-through windows are permitted.
Talks about drive-through windows.
For a financial institution, for example.
Hardware stores, appliances, sales.
Okay, I thought you said automotive, but okay.
Oh, no, yes.
No, no, it says repair shop, and I just said I would want to be clear that that's not automotive.
Yeah.
But yes, I mean, I think those lists can be reviewed and pared down.
Right, but you need to give them clear direction as to what you don't want.
I listed mine, so I listed out what was specifically concerning me. Go ahead, Mr. Fox.
I am prepared to offer a motion to postpone. I am definitely going to miss some of the bullet points. Just let me finish. If someone chooses they want a second, they can, let me know, happy to take amendments. But I'm just going to try to spit it out there and get the ball rolling. Motion that proposed Somerset West Concept Development Plan and Preliminary Development Plan for Phase 1A, north side of Big Beaver, west side of Coolidge, 3100 West Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-19-476-002, 8820-19-476-003, and 88-20-19-430-004. Section 19, presently zoned, PUD zoning district be postponed, giving the applicant time to...I'm going to list my big two things. I would like to see the applicant offer up minimums in terms of housing units. I don't want it to just be maximums, I want there to be minimums that the applicant puts forward an offer of what they think is reasonable, and we can negotiate it from there. And then I would like to see the applicant put forward language that restricts or eliminates auto-centric uses such as drive-throughs and other auto-focused, however that language would look, I'm not a lawyer. So that is my motion, if anyone is interested in seconding it.
Do we have a second, or do we want to ask him for amendments before we second?
We need amendments.
What's the procedure?
Call for a second first, and then you discuss, and if you need to amend the motion.
Okay, do we have anyone who's going to second that?
I'll second it for now.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Lambert. Did you want to add something?
I was going to ask if we wanted to include Mr. Tagel's language pertaining to some type of previewed design of what U of M has in mind, or is that kind of what you were looking for?
I think the terminology, I'd like to see a master plan of how they will develop the properties they are going to purchase or believe they are going to purchase, so I guess that's 17 acres.
I would be comfortable accepting that if my second is also comfortable with accepting that, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to say, go ahead, Ms. Malala Hawley. There are also some uses, sorry, that is me, there are also some uses that we do definitely want to make sure that it's not part of the PUD agreement, and those would be repair shops, hopefully it's not auto repair shops, to be clear, trade schools, drive-throughs, hardware store, appliance sale. I think I captured most of it, if I'm missing...
No town homes or single-family homes.
No town homes or single-family homes.
And no nursing homes.
And no nursing homes.
I would accept those as an amendment if my second is comfortable with that, okay.
And I'm not finished. I would like to add that they reexamine the open space and see if they can't make that, increase that space from an acre. I don't know if you guys would agree with that. And the phasing needs specificity, we need, if you looked at the PUD, it was blanked, they removed any mention of dates or timelines and put lines. Those should be filled in with actual number of years, dates, there should be an expiration.
Do you have any guidance to provide on those? I think part of the reason that they're blank is because we didn't know what this body's will was on that.
So the previous one, if I understood it correctly, was that they need to break ground within five years of the effective date, or it expires?
Keep in mind that they're seeking approval for Phase 1A, which would, that's your breaking of the ground, and then that there's no expiration.
Yeah, right, so I think we don't have to worry that it's going to sit for five years, I would hope, but, so I think it's generous, so I don't think they would have any issue agreeing to that. But then maybe on the back end, 10 years? I mean, I'm trying to think how we did it with the other.
Would the Chair potentially be comfortable with, and also if my second is comfortable with, adding language to the motion that requests that the applicant suggest a timeline that we have the ability to review and negotiate?
Suggesting is better.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, I'm totally willing to have them bring it to us and we can talk about it. It's hard for me to know, I don't know these things. I'm basing it off of the comments he made to us, that we want it to be done in five years, or you know what, so that's what I'm going off of. I don't really know something of this magnitude, so I'd rather have them propose it, you guys review it and weigh in, and then present it to us and we can decide. But a timeline for sure, not blanks.
Yeah, I would say a timeline, but again, you can't, you know, anticipate downturns in economies, you know, things that, you know, it's just...
But they can always ask for extensions, that's always been part of this, but I think it's unheard of to enter an agreement with no timeline.
Oh, it should, okay, go ahead.
The ordinance specifies that a CDP is good for five years.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
It's already there.
Okay.
And then you said in your original proposal, minimums for housing, but I'd like to see just the whole presentation, everything that they're talking about building, give us a little bit more specificity on what we can expect with a minimum and maximum that they are comfortable with, but that guarantees it's going to be built, and if they're not sure about it, then they tell us they're not. You know, like the hotel, for example, if they're not sure about it, that's fine. We're not going to hold them to building a hotel, but the housing, if that's important to this body, then that should be in there.
So I think if this addresses the Chair's concerns, my thought is I would like to keep the language referencing, I would like the applicant to propose minimums, just propose what they think is reasonable for minimums, but also maybe just a general guideline to address the, narrow the scope to provide more, here, okay, narrow the scope of the design plan to allow for more specificity as it relates to specific sites. Propose that sort of language that allows you the flexibility that you all think that you need, while also providing us more assurance in terms of what this is actually going to look like when it's done. In terms of how specifically that language looks legally, I will leave that up to lawyers who are much smarter than me, if my second is comfortable with absorbing that in the motion.
Jackie, are you comfortable with the motion?
Yeah. That's bananas, but, okay, hold on. I think I have it.
Should she read it back to us perhaps? I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'll try, I can, I can try.
Okay.
Let's see.
Just to the conditions.
Yep, okay. Applicant proposes minimums for housing units. Applicant put forward language that eliminates auto-focused businesses, narrow the scope of design plans, and provide specificity. Request master plan of how U of M will develop what they expect to purchase, eliminate business options that include repair shops, trade schools, appliance sales, no town homes, no single-family homes, no nursing homes. Reexamine the open space to increase from one acre, and unmark the PUD blanks, request applicant a time, request that the applicant provide a timeline that can be negotiated.
Two more to be added to the list.
I was going to say, you can combine, you know, you said minimum for housing, and then we talked about, in general, and then we talked about the uses. It's basically, we want the minimums and maximums for things that they're willing to stipulate, and then the uses, no auto-centric can go along with all that other list, because those are all...and then did we, I had it written down, but I didn't hear it back, because I might have just written it on my own, but what about requiring them to specify the 17 acres, because they kept talking about the one on the north side, on the left, on the west, but we didn't see it in the PUD?
Yes.
And I don't know that they got yours quite right. Did she, she said something about a master plan?
Yes.
Request master plan of how U of M will develop what they expect to purchase?
Well, what they're going to purchase or...
Oh, I see what she's, yeah.
Whatever acreage they're going to purchase or plan to potentially purchase. I just want to see what they've thought about their development on this piece of property. You know, the other, if I could continue.
Yes.
We have standards in the ordinance for PUD, and I would suggest that the petitioner's architect look at those standards and make sure that everything on those standards comes back to us and is answered with some type of information.
And definitely...
So that should be added as, please review the standards in the PUD. I think it's 11.06 is where the standards are.
11.03.
Oh, it's 11.03. Yeah, correct, correct, you're right. Okay, 11.03, standards for approval.
Those are in the PUD agreement. What exactly are you looking for in terms of the...
If there's any information that's not been presented, that's on that list, should be presented. Those are how they meet these standards.
I would potentially see a reference to the ordinance, maybe as more of, maybe we verbally advise that the applicant do it. I think putting it in the motion is redundant to Ms. Dufresne's point, that those points are already in the PUD agreement, so I think suggesting the applicant to do something they've hypothetically already done, I think it is, I think the note is taken that they will reference that when they're presenting this next time around, they will say, hey, here's how we meet the standards, or something to that effect. I think codifying it in the motion may be redundant.
Just to be clear, I thought that in the PUD, it listed, literally listed, the zoning ordinance. I thought Mr. Tagel meant there should be, they should be, when they come next time, they should address how they're satisfying, which is, most people who come in front of us with a PUD, they go through and say, it requires this, we've done this, you know, and they present it to us, so we're all like, yep, yep, you checked enough of the boxes. Doesn't have to go into the PUD, I mean, the PUD, it just, it basically was a cut and paste of our ordinance.
Right, that's why I was asking for clarification, because it is already in the, those statements are already in the PUD agreement. So you don't think that they have satisfied that today?
I don't think it needs to be put into the motion. I think that, you know, those are ultimately subjective, and whether or not the applicants met it, you know, that's for the applicant to convince those on Planning Commission who are not convinced that they have met it. I wouldn't necessarily view it as a need to put it into the motion specifically.
Well, I'm, we've been, we've been asked by our attorney to be specific as to what we're looking for, and I don't want this to be missed, because if they come back and they don't touch upon several of the items, then what? Then we get to ask them to come back again and try again. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be as inclusive as I can, so that the next time they're in front of us, we can move this thing along.
I can see that point. For the sake of including it, I would say that they don't necessarily, for the sake of the motion, to be specific, we are not requesting that they add language, we are requesting that they address it in a follow-up presentation.
Okay, and you're seconding that?
That's fine.
And Jackie, you're good?
I'll get it.
Okay, so the motion's now on the floor. I don't know if we feel ready to vote on this, or if we want to continue the discussion. Do we feel like we've given the applicant...
I got it, it's fine with me.
Enough direction?
Yep.
Do we feel like it? Okay. Yes, Mr. Lambert?
I just wanted to say that by and large, I know Mr. Forbes has been a good corporate citizen, and you can see that evident by Somerset Collection, and as Mr. Carlisle's report, I think a U of M health facility or medical facility in Troy would be a great asset for the community. Hopefully by the next meeting, we can get everything resolved, because ultimately it's up to City Council to approve it, but I think hopefully we'll get everything resolved by the next meeting.
Yep, I would hope so too. All right, we'll go ahead and take the vote, Jackie, when you're ready.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Biechner?
I want it to go through, so I'm saying no.
Ms. Malala Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Kran?
Yes.
Ms. Proakis?
Yes. So motion passes for postponement.
Correct.
So thank you very much. Yes, of course, come on up.
Am I cleared in, has the PUD formally expired?
Yes, the PUD agreement is...
Formally expired, so we revert back to the underlying zoning?
Well, that's the question, that's the question of the day, because...
So if the PUD is expired, we could sell the whole 40 acres to a constitutional corporation today, and you would have no control over those 40 acres.
In theory, you're correct. But just so everyone understands, when the PUD agreement was put into place in the 2007, 2008, BB zoning didn't exist. So that's why we, the city, didn't rezone the property, because the question is, what is the best zoning for that property? BB zoning makes the most sense, because that's what the master plan calls for today, but BB zoning didn't exist, so in terms of reversion, it would go back to something that really...
Well, all I want to say...
Yes, to Mr. Forbes's point is, yes.
We could sell the whole 28, 40 acres to U of M today, and this city would have nothing to say about it.
Correct.
That is not my intent, I just want to say one thing, shame on us, and shame on everybody in this room. We have spent seven months keeping this deal together and trying to codify this deal. If I had known for one minute the University of Michigan should have been here presenting their design and their development and their plans, they would have been here. If I knew one time that these uses were to be specified, we would have talked about it. I'm not sure what we've been talking about in this PUD plan for seven months, but I'm a little bit fit to be tied. I've spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars with my attorneys and my planners and traffic consultants in going through all this iteration to get from where we were in front of you last time, we had two or three comments we addressed, now to about 30 comments that we are supposed to go back to address. So I'm not quite sure what this collective group has been doing for seven months, and if you call that frustration, it is. And maybe we'll see you again, and maybe we won't.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, please.
I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Sure.
Thank you.
So this is your goal.
So we'll come back at 9:55. So we'll come back at 9:55.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm, we're gonna get back, Amy. That was only two minutes, but, um, everyone's ready to go?
All right, so we are on preliminary site plan, item number six, preliminary site plan JPLN 2025-0009, proposed Bose Hub Office and Engineering, south of Big Beaver, east of Troy Center. The address is 755 West Big Beaver, PIN 88-20-28-101-74, section 28, presently zoned Big Beaver Zoning District. And Mr. Carlisle's going to present to us.
Yes, thank you. Tonight before you, you have a proposed development on the, what we often refer to as the PNC site in Troy. Tony Anton from Cajoian is here. He's been in front of the board many times before with this property in various phases. The site is zoned Big Beaver and the applicant is Bose, the speaker company, who is looking to acquire the, a portion of the existing parking lot for PNC, which is outlined in that red outline in front of you. It's, after the lot split, it'll be about 4.9 acres. And the lot split is proposed to separate the subject site from the existing parent parcel along Troy Center Drive. The site layout is a 78,000 square foot, two-story office and engineering building for Bose. And I've, and I don't remember if this is their, Bose's regional headquarters. I just maybe like some, some more detail from the applicant about what exactly Bose is doing at this particular location. The parking will be on, on all four sides of the site, and we do note there is a sidewalk that wraps around the building with an employee patio located at the northwest corner. Access to the site is along Troy Center Drive. It would require travel through the adjacent parking lot. We do note that once the lot split is complete, it does comply with all the bulk standards and requirements of the Big Beaver District. We had a long and negotiated discussion with the applicant about building location. It was very important to the applicant that they have exposure from 75. And so we, we expressed some of our ideas and thoughts about putting the building on Troy Center Drive. The applicant notes that this is the first phase in a multi-phase project for the development. I think, yeah, my next photo shows that their intent is to put another building that fronts on the, on Troy Center Drive. And the future building, in this diagram, is approximately 10,000, 11,000 square feet. Again, that would come in for another site plan review by the planning commission at a future phase. But the applicant was adamant that they and their client really needed that back exposure for the particular location of this property. With regards to parking, there's a requirement of this building is 206 spaces. They're providing 218. They have noted that they are putting eight spaces will have EV charging stations that will be installed as part of the installation of the parking lot. They have provided the required landscaping, they've actually exceeded the required landscaping. However, we note that they are required to provide 28 trees internal to the parking lot. 18 of those trees are along the perimeter, so 15 are interior. So they are exceeding the number required on the lot. However, they're deficient in terms of the number that are interior to the parking lot. Again, the planning commission can, can grant this waiver and the applicant notes that there are some hardships to some underground utilities already within the existing parking lot. We do note that the rest of the site is compliant with landscaping. This is, again, is a, is kind of a two-story building and we note that the first floor is, has both a, what they're calling a high bay and that allows for flexibility for what the use of the operation of the building is inside. And that high bay area is that blue color. The green color is the first floor workspace. And the second story is that, second story is a green space. And again, that high bay is on the south side of this elevation. I'm sorry, this floor plan. It's a large two-story building, it's 31 feet in height, so it complies with the zoning ordinance requirements. Its material includes metal panels, ground face block, aluminum and glass, glass curtain wall. The stone wraps around all four corners, four sides of the building and the colors are primarily a black and gray with some red accents. And it does meet the transparency requirements as the frontage on the parking lots as well as the frontage on Troy Center Drive. These are two other elevations. This is a colored rendering of the front primary entrance to the building. Again, this is the elevation that would front on Troy Center Drive. These are the other side and rear elevations. There are site plan standards the planning commission should consider. Ensure compatibility with existing commercial districts and provide transition. Incorporate best recognized architectural practices and enhance the character environment safety for pedestrians and motorists. So we are asking the planning commission to consider the compliance with the Big Beaver standards, compliance with the site plan review standards, and consideration of a waiver for the parking lot landscaping. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
Mr. Carlisle or Mr. Savin, one or the other. Didn't we have a similar proposal for this site like two years ago? And so maybe we're gonna ask the applicant why he's back again, so.
I think this is the third one I've, I've looked at. There was a hotel one, there was a office retail building, and then this is, this is this one.
Okay, right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Fox?
In regards to the parking lot trees, how is the applicant doing on parking spaces? Are they meeting parking? If they, are they well overparked? What is the?
I think they're 12 spaces over in terms of the number of spaces required.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll invite the applicant up if you wanna, I mean-
Hi, good evening. My name's Chris Cajoian with the Cajoian Companies. I just want to introduce our team and then we're here to answer any questions you guys have. Tony Anton's also here from the Cajoian Companies. Courtney Kacho's with Bose. Andy Kirsch with Genzel, who's the architect for the project. Sam Ashley and Nick Devlin with Cunningham Wim. Julie Crowell with Voison Vanderbrink. And John Howser with BEA Group. So we have kind of all our bases covered, everyone here to answer any questions that you have. Before I get started answering questions, I'd love to invite Courtney with Bose up to just tell you a little bit more about the project, if that's okay.
That'd be great.
Great.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to meet all of you. So my name is Courtney Kacho and I'm here representing Bose Corporation. A lot of people know Bose as a speaker company. You may have our headphones, our earbuds, but what a lot of people don't know is that Bose also has sound systems in cars. So if you don't know what sound system your car has, maybe you can go after this and check. But what's really exciting about this is this space is really more than just an office for us, it is our automotive hub. So you can imagine, we're in the heart of the motor city, right? And the automotive industry has started here with Henry Ford and has continued on for many years. And so for Bose, it's really important for us to establish ourselves as the automotive hub. We have our consumer headquarters in Boston and we really want to establish ourselves here in Metro Detroit. So this is really going to be our dedicated center of excellence and our innovation hub for our automotive division. We will have engineering labs, mechanical engineering labs, software engineering labs, and also a critical listening room to really foster innovation and research. We are going to have consumer immersion spaces to allow our external partners to really come in, experience our technology, hear how the sound is in different vehicles, and also have multiple car bays to bring sound to life in an array of vehicles. So for us at Bose, our technologies aren't really just about sound and music, they're about emotion, immersion, and innovation. It's really about hearing what you want to hear in a car and kind of reducing the noise in other places that you don't want to hear. And so really what we want for this space in Troy is to bring together our top engineering minds, key business leaders, and creative talent, and really just work together to shape the future of automotive sound. And we want to plant roots in Troy because this is a city that embraces innovation, it really values talent and drives progress forward. So this also, I think, would really give an opportunity to local talent. We have a lot of audio engineers, system design, automotive innovation, right? So it's an exciting place to be if you're in Metro Detroit. And we're also working to build relationships with nonprofit organizations in STEAM to really support that long-term pipeline of talent for those underserved communities as well. So we're really trying to shape the next generation of vehicles, right? Where kind of the auto industry was born. So just want to give a heartfelt thank you for welcoming Bose to Troy and looking forward to working together. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's actually very nice to have, you know, to allow your, your client to come up and, and, and present to us and give us all of that background and information and how you're investing in Troy. I mean, I personally appreciate that very much and I'm sure everyone else does as well.
So welcome.
It, it gives us a much better idea of the building and what's going to be happening in there. And a lot of times we're approving things and we don't quite get that background, so it was very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, for one, enjoy my 10-speaker Bose system in my car. I love it every, every minute, second of it.
I also wanted to add, thank you for using the word STEAM because sound is also an art. Thank you.
Yes, it is, it is. So, um, okay, so let's open it up to questions. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Fox.
Was there more that you wanted to present? Just to-
So I'm happy to just answer questions. I know there were some questions about the previous development, so whatever, wherever you guys want to start, we're here for you.
May I ask a question of the Bose representative? Yeah. I like this a lot. I think it's a really nice building. I love that you guys are investing in southeast Michigan. I appreciate that you guys chose Troy as the place that you want to locate. And I ask because I like this project. Has Bose, I understand wanting to expand into automotive and like really get with the tariff situation. I know cars have specifically been highlighted as some, a commodity that is potentially going to increase dramatically in price. Has Bose kind of thought ahead to a world where hypothetically cars aren't flying off the lots as quickly or, you know, how that would affect the overall plan for this office?
Yes, 100%. Tariffs is the, the Merriam-Webster dictionary word of the year for us at Bose. I would say, in all reality, when we book business in the automotive industry, we're booking five years out, right? So we have booked business for this year and the next couple of years that we've already booked in prior years. We do expect the market to soften a little bit just due to those tariffs. So our sales team and our marketing team and our engineers are already kind of trying to get ahead of that, but in reality, it's not something that we would realize probably until the book business of 2030 and beyond.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Malala Hawley. For one, the building is awesome. I really like the building, especially the red accent that you have, that you have on the building is great. My only quip is that there is a long drive to the building, right? And the drive is through a very drabby parking, parking, asphalt parking space. I know there is a future plan because you, Mr. Carlisle presented it and I do see it on the thing. Any thoughts on that? Would you like to kind of spruce up the drive a little bit for your own, for the employees of Bose, of course, and visitors?
Yeah, so this, this was very intentional where we placed the building and then we've spent many, many months designing this site. A few key points that were touched on, the signage from I-75 is, is why this site is, is what it is and why Bose wants to put, you know, their name in Troy so everyone driving through sees it and they know that that's where they are. So that was a component. On the flip side of wanting that visibility, they're bringing in concept cars that are five years from being on the, the lots of dealerships that are highly confidential that they don't want people to see. So they'll have those cars delivered to the loading area on the kind of planned southeast there, where they're taken inside that high bay space, you know, under, you know, sometimes covered in, in the camouflage wraps that we all see in Michigan driving on the road or, you know, other means of concealment. So by locating it on this part of the site, we give them that private drop-off area essentially for those vehicles as well as that freeway visibility. So that's why we chose this side of the site. You'll see on our landscape plan that not only did we exceed the number of trees, we added the green belts on the north and the west side to truly define this as a headquarters site. So it's, it's containing, you know, where their employees are parking, where their visitors are parking. There's a lot more grass and green space than is required. And if you go there today, it's, it's completely asphalt. It's, it's a massive parking lot. So we're very excited about putting all that green space in and deliberately designing it so that it feels like its own little campus.
No, that explains it. The fact that you will have some cars coming in there and use, okay, that, that makes sense. Thank you for that explanation.
Mr. Tagle?
I, I, just to pick up on, on what Ms. Malala Hawley just said, as you enter the property off of Town Center, have you considered maybe some colonnade of trees along this, this ingress drive and this egress drive? I know you, I know there's parking there, but like at the end of the parking lines, if you could have, you know, a, a landscape buffer there and just put some trees down there. It's almost more of an announcement that you're, you're coming up to this building, this grand building, as opposed to I'm driving through the side of a parking lot.
Yeah, so we're, we're focused on, on where actually this Bose site, where that building is going to go, not the neighboring parcel to the west or to the north. There is a plan for some retail along Troy Center Drive in the future. We're actually talking to a user right now about that facility that would be a single tenant, you know, retail use or commercial use. And that is its own standalone entity as well as the property is to the north. So you'll see on the, the map that we just went over, so there, there is some, some green space, sorry. Yeah, so the green, the islands on the north end of that parking lot, there's some green space leading you into Bose. So it's really not the sea of parking that you're thinking the rest of it is. If we go back to the satellite kind of view right there, so you'll see there's a larger, there's a laser pointer right here, this larger green piece here, these islands that come all the way across.
What about on the south side?
So the south side there, currently there are not islands right there. While anyone could use that as the entrance, we see that, you know, generally for those cars being delivered and those kinds of, you know, trucks and deliveries coming into the site. And really their signage in the main entrance is going to be right here on Troy Center Drive. So people are coming in off of Big Beaver 75. And the building is designed so that this is very clearly, you know, the front entrance, what's drawing everyone in. You have that large kind of plaza outside of the front where they can host events, employees, you know, sit outside, eat their lunch. So it's, it is intentionally designed to draw people into that northern portion of the parking lot.
Is, are those access drives cross easement agreements?
Yes. Those are, those are existing easements today.
Oh, they are existing?
Yes, they're existing easements. There was previously a parcel split for the southern part from the existing top of Troy PNC Tower. So there are easements throughout the entire site for access.
But the split you're talking about, the north-south split or the east-west split is a new split for this development and the future-
That is correct.
Retail development. Well, I guess just, you know, whether your main entrance drive is on the north side and your delivery side is on the south side, I just think it would be a nice termination point at the end of those islands, so those parking islands, to have some landscape in there just to help define that drive aisle as a separate entity. It's not, you know, it's, it just doesn't bleed into the parking lot.
Yeah, I will say again, we're, we're here for the site plan for, for Bose, so that, that one parcel. And that is where, you know, we've made the decision with Bose and the developer to enhance with the green belt, you know, surrounding the property there that is, is not required. So we're going above and beyond with that green space as well as the tree count throughout the parking lot so that it really is an attraction and it's, it's a lot better than what's there today.
I mean, I'm gonna jump in here just because I, I have, one of my main concerns about the, you know, I love the building, I love everything about it. What I dislike, and it's, it's a difficult situation to be in, is plopping a building down in the middle of a parking lot. So I know that you're talking about, yeah, I'll give you a second. So I know that you're talking about, we're- So I know that you're talking about, we're just talking about that parcel, that 4.9 acres on the west, sorry, on the east. But I believe you own the whole parcel even though it's being split. So I think that there's an opportunity here to improve this so we can create a drive. So to me, I was over there, it's a terrible parking lot, right? It's just, I mean, you know what it is.
Massive, yeah.
It's massive, it's overparked, and it's, and this is a huge improvement. I mean, obviously the building's gorgeous, but the, also I love how you, you, it's like this island in that parking lot. So I love all of that. But just as a planning commissioner and trying to look through the zoning nuances and talk about how it complies, it really needs to be, the entrance should be on a right-of-way. And to me, it's a stretch to say that that entrance is on Town Center Drive. I mean, it's not, and there's going to be a building blocking that entrance. So really what I'd like to see, I mean, it's sort of a long-term investment for your next phase, but that south side, as you know, has plenty of room. If you were to do the same sort of improvements to that parking lot to the west and make a road, and by road, I'm using the term loosely, but a drive and have the people come in from the south, I don't know why PNC would want people driving in front of their entrance. When I went to leave and I drove by there, there were people coming in and out, walking to their cars. That to me doesn't seem like a place where all of your employees should be driving through to get to their, it makes more sense for them to come from the south and come along a drive that even winds up and comes in and, you know, they're still going to come into that, that entrance, but I just think that it should be coming from the south.
Yeah, so just to address that, the PNC Tower itself, while it's a separate entity, is an incredibly, you know, successful, busy building, and we've invested in it a lot over the years. And we have many plans, you know, moving forward of investing in that building. So one of those plans is activating some retail within the building, which we're still working on those plans and talking to some users as to how to facilitate that. So really by adding and enhancing the existing tower, putting in, you know, a future retail building in the parking lot, it's only creating a bigger and better campus for Bose's employees and their guests and everyone else in the area. So the reason we're intentionally focusing on keeping it, you know, with the tower right there is so people, they're coming in that way, they know, hey, I can go into the Friends Cafe in the PNC Center and go and get lunch, or the future retail in that building. So, and actually Bose, when they first came in, toured through the tower before we even went onto the site and walked around the parking lot to see those amenities and understand what's available there for their employees. So it's, we're trying to keep the connectivity even back up to Big Beaver. We're going to be adding and enhancing the sidewalks going, you know, along the tower back out to Troy Center Drive. So this island here is going to be reconfigured with a walkway out here so those employees can walk from their building and they're, you know, on these sidewalks, walk over here and be able to go up and enjoy all of the benefits and the amenities in the area. So we've spent a lot of time thinking through where are people going to walk and where are those paths taking them? To the south, there's not as many attractions and amenities. Obviously, everything's up on Big Beaver, so...
And I understand, and I think that's smart, that you've, your entrance is northwest and you just described why, and it makes sense and it's great. I'm talking about the vehicles coming in. I don't, I don't personally see the importance of the vehicles driving by the PNC to get to their parking spot, which is, you know, somewhere else on the lot. When they want to walk in and out of the building to go over to PNC, they're going to be in the right spot. And I think just eliminating that vehicular traffic along what we're talking about for pedestrians would be definitely an improvement.
Yeah, I think just one more point on that. So as this is a hub for Bose, they have a lot of customers and other clients in the area that are coming in for meetings, they're going to have displays both, you know, outside on that patio, in their garage spaces throughout the building. So there's going to be people that are coming here infrequently for those sales types of meetings and understanding what products they're selling, where they're coming off of I-75, coming down on the Troy Center Drive. And it's, it's a natural flow with where those turnarounds are, how you come into the site. If you look, if you go down to the southern entrance there, you do have to loop back around, which all of us from Michigan, we understand the Michigan left and how you turn around. You have someone flying from out of town, they're going to end up going back down, having to come around. So we've really studied this hard and we're proud of kind of the traffic coming in. And so we feel very strongly about that northern portion there. And as well as keeping the trucks separate from the cars coming in and out, you know, it's full-size tractor trailers delivering these concept cars that are confidential. So just keeping those cars to the northern end there.
So can you still at least make a drive for those trucks to be coming through that would sort of bifurcate it from the parking lot then to the north on the west property?
Not without impacting the neighboring parcels. We're, again, we're focusing on the circulation around the Bose building itself and that site plan there. So while we're allowing for that pedestrian connectivity out to Troy Center Drive, the easements for those cars coming in, actually building on and enhancing another parcel, which is a different ownership structure, different partnership, it's, just because we do have an interest in the overall site, doesn't mean that, you know, it's one and the same.
Okay. Mr. Savadon, I think, wanted to say something.
When you talk about making, making a road or creating more of a street, or I forget the verb you used, are you talking about maybe the, at the end of each aisle, creating like a landscape island to kind of define and channelize the traffic so it's not a wide-open expansion?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting that what you did for your own, on the, you know, the property in question, you created a very nice boundary and there's caps of islands at the, at the caps of the rows of parking. If that continued, so when I say road, I don't mean...
No, no, I understand.
But, but just a drive that would prevent someone from just flying, coming in your north side and cutting through the parking lot, I mean, that's what you, you should have seen me out there today. I mean, I was just driving...
You were the one doing donuts in the parking lot?
Yeah, right. I mean, I was driving around the parking lot and there were some weird wood chip areas everywhere. I couldn't figure that out, but...
The snow melt areas, yeah.
Oh, really?
It's back from the 70s.
Oh, my gosh. So, but the point is, is it was just sort of chaos to me. That's what I love about what you're doing to this portion, but I can't help but feel that they're connected because you have to drive through it to get to your portion. I'd like to see a little bit of an improvement, even putting the islands just at the south side to create that drive feel for whether it's your trucks or anyone who ends up going down that way, figuring out our Michigan left and using it.
Yeah, so one of, one of my hesitations with that and points to bring forward is we don't yet have that retail building solidified. While we're talking to users, we understand what conceptually could fit there just based on square footage and setback requirements. You know, going in and modifying that parking lot and putting in all these islands and things that ultimately could get taken out because we have to reconfigure that parking. You know, I'm comfortable for now if we, you know, striping it and making sure that it's very clear that it's a drive aisle and better defining that. But I think us putting in those islands to ultimately have to take them back out to reconfigure the parking lot for that future building is a tough, you know, going back and doing it twice essentially.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Yes, Mr. Tagel.
The parking on the parcel to the west, is that parking for the PNC Tower? Is that parking for the future retail building? How is that come into play here? I know we're not voting on that, but...
Yeah, so there is, as well as the access easements throughout the site, there's a shared parking agreement. So that parking right now, it serves the tower and it would serve the future retail there. So it would be shared amongst the entirety of the site.
Do you have more than enough?
Oh, yeah. We did six months of parking studies where our building engineer, once a week, I felt horrible asking for it, was counting the cars in the parking lot. And so we, and taking pictures. And so we've established that we are very well overparked, as you'll see any day of the week driving through. And the tower is at 86% occupancy. So it's, we're very confident we would not put ourselves in a position where we did not have enough parking to sell space to people.
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I think what the chair is talking about, we're talking about on the south end adjacent to your south drive. We're not talking about anything that you would have to disturb because you're always going to have that south drive, right? So all I'm saying is, you know, if you can create a colonnade with some end caps with some trees in them, I mean, that's, you know, basically it.
Yeah, no, we hear you. I'm Tony Anton with the Kijun Companies. We hear you loud and clear. We are willing to put trees on the south greenbelt area, you know, add more trees. But to add the islands in a place where trucks are going to be coming through, we know is a disaster. The trucks just go right over those islands, they absolutely decimate them. Nobody even parks down that far south in our, in our building, nobody. It has been vacant for 30 years. So, and we don't really want that to be an entrance for the facility. We want it to be at the center drive off of Troy Center where the sign's going to be, where it's going to lead them to the front entrance of Bose. The employees are going to come from all three entrances off of Troy Center Drive. They really are. But it's the customers that they do, they do not want to go anywhere except for that middle drive on Troy Center leading right to the front door of Bose.
I think your plan accomplishes that. And what we're suggesting is not making a second entry drive for any customers. At one hand, not being able to turn left off of Troy Center into that southern drive is a benefit to that. But how your trucks are going to negotiate that is a whole other question. Because I don't, if you've got a long haul or something in there, I don't know how they're going to get around.
You're right. The civil guys have already looked at that. Exactly right. They, they know what they're doing on that front. And I think if we're just talking about enhancing the existing greenbelt, we're certainly open to that. We just don't want to create more islands on the south because it'll, it's really just, frankly, a waste of money. And we think it's going to be really not functional.
No, it'll be aesthetically pleasing though.
That's, again, that's, that's a different parcel and we're, we're trying to focus on this parcel. We could talk about that when we get to the next one, which we hope to be in a couple months.
It will.
I know we will.
Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Beekner.
I think you guys are short some parking trees and that might be a compromise. One comment I'd make, I was in automotive for 16 years in a Tier 1, and it's going to be fun. That's a great spot. I like what you're doing there.
Thank you. I would also like to say the ordinance does call for one tree per every eight parking space, you know, that there is. We are exceeding that number and again, we're putting the greenbelt in. So while we're not sprinkling them and putting in peninsulas, you know, every handful of parking spaces, if you've maintained a property, you've driven a snow pile through a parking lot, it is incredibly different, difficult to keep that pavement clean. You're banging up all those curbs. We've intentionally, again, put that greenbelt in, scattered those trees throughout the site. So if it's a matter of, you know, a couple more trees, you know, we went five above the ordinance because that's what we were comfortable with that made the site look good. But we love those greenbelts and cannot stress enough how much that enhances the site from where it is today.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So before we discuss, does anyone want to propose a resolution?
I could do it.
Is there one in there?
Yep.
Page 143.
Wow. Wait, you know what? Sorry, let me just really quick, it's not a public hearing, but is anyone here from the public who wants to speak on this topic? I thought you introduced everyone in the room, but just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Okay, that's fair.
Go ahead.
Okay. Preliminary site plan JPLN 205, 25-0009, proposed Bose Hub Office and Engineering south of Big Beaver, east of Troy Center, 755 West Big Beaver, in 88-20-28-101-074, Section 28. Presently zoned BB, Big Beaver Zoning District, resolve that the preliminary site plan approval pursuant with, pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Bose Hub Office and Engineering, south of Big Beaver, we're repeating the whole thing, okay, south of Big Beaver, east of Troy Center, 755 West Big Beaver, Section 28, approximately 4.9 acres in size, currently zoned BB, be granted, period.
Second.
We got a, who seconded? Sorry.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Fox, okay. I just remembered something, I'm sorry. I might be asking the applicant the question, so I might ask you to come back up. That south elevation is very monotonous, it's just a brick wall. Is that, are you going to tell me it's because of privacy and...
It is. So that's the high bay space where those cars are going to be. There's very strict requirements amongst the entire automotive industry that dictates, you know, the types of security levels that need to be there for those concept vehicles. So that's where the inspiration came from. We did make sure that there is some, are some repeated elements throughout the brick and break it up. Andy has phoned in from Boston with Gensler and he would be happy to comment on the material choice and how, what we did to enhance that facade as much as possible.
Yeah, if you don't mind coming up, I'd like to hear that. So windows are out of the question even if they're up high?
Yeah, currently it's a security and confidentiality issue. We do know that the zoning ordinance does take into account, you have long interrupted facades, breaking up the facades with different material changes and things like that. So that is the intention here. We are, we're starting to represent this on some of the renderings. You can see it, it's still a work in progress, but the idea is to introduce variation in the block materials. You start to introduce patterning and texture so that as this, this facade will have some variation in it, some movement. So that's, that's the idea.
You're talking about the south?
The south side.
So, so it wasn't just the striping of the white lines going down? That's part of it, but it's also going to be a variation of brick or stone?
It'll be kind of a variation between these two tones.
Oh, interesting.
And then we'll look at a texture as well. So one could be a rough, rougher kind of textured face and the other one could be more smooth. So it's, and we're starting to show it here. I would say we're early in schematic design. We'll continue to work through this and get something that actually, you know, that gets us to where we want to be. But we did want to just demonstrate some texturing and patterning on the facade for now. We do know it's something to address. But we, we also, you know, positioning that on the south side of the site is away from all of the main traffic coming into the site. So it was the ideal place to have the most opaque facade and that's why it's positioned there.
Okay. And the striping is what, metal strips?
It's going to be another block, block material, different color and different texture. So it'll have a little bit of, it'll stick out a little bit, so it won't be completely smooth, so there'll be some shadow and then some color variation.
You good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, okay, thank you. Although, when we look at these things, this is what we're getting, right? I mean, because you said you're still working it out and, I mean, this is what we're getting, right?
Yeah, I mean, so these renderings, I'll come back to the microphone. These renderings were in schematic design. So as we're going through pricing, obviously there's a whole process that we're going through, but this is the design intent. There will be some slight variation. If there's anything major, obviously we'd have to come back and present that. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm just saying we'll be looking at how those patterns are actually spaced out and...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Just to add to that, the detail that he's talking about is the difference between like the smooth brick that you see on the wall in this room versus something that has more grit to it. So when you feel it, it's a rougher surface. So we're talking about, you know, the exact product that we're specing, you know, construction pricing is all over the place today, so we're looking at what fits within the budget. But this, the color scheme, the material selection, the type of materials, that is what you're getting. It's just the fine details that we leave up to the architects to choose, the right type of stone or the right material that's, that's going to meet the budget and meet the design that we've come forth, you know, and had approved by this body.
Okay, okay, thank you, that explains it.
You find me?
Yeah, these materials represent what we want to do for this building and as we These materials represent what we want to do for this building, and as we go, we'll put a fine point on that. But this is the design intent.
Okay, yep. I don't know whether the gentleman signed on the sheet.
I don't think anyone signed in.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'll be the first.
I'm the worst police on that. I don't know if Courtney signed in, did you? She did not. Okay, so discussions open. I just wanted to get that cleared up, but I think we're comfortable with a solid dark...back. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
Just on the resolution first, on behalf of the city of Troy, I apologize for the fact that we do not have Bose speakers up here, so...
It's true.
We'll be talking to our purchasing director to make that correction in the future, but welcoming Bose to the community. And secondly, there's a side benefit to this. I noticed when I was in the parking lot the other day, people who work in those buildings just to the south of you are walking across that open parking lot. And so they'll now be able to use the sidewalk in front of your building more safely access to the top of Troy building. So it looks like a good development.
I mean, I think the hope is when this is all said and done and the whole development is finished, it's going to be beautiful because we won't have that vast parking that isn't very attractive right now. Okay. If anyone wanted to say anything else, or are we ready for a move?
Seconded.
It's been seconded. We've been discussing. All right, we're going to go for the vote.
Ms. Brackus?
Yes.
Mr. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel?
Yes.
Mr. Beekner?
Yes.
Ms. Malala-Hali?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Crunn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, so moving right along to, I'm assuming it's, if I remember correctly, it's public comment for items that are on the agenda.
Correct.
Is anyone here for items on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing no one coming up, let's do Planning Commission comments, starting with Mr. Fox.
Keep it real quick. I made sure to plug the joint meeting we have with council next week to the ZBA. At least one or two ZBA members will probably be in attendance, so looking forward to that.
Mr. Beekner? Mr. Faison?
Nothing for me.
Lambert?
Nothing.
Malala-Hali?
Me? Okay, planners gathering. Who figured, huh? April 29th, next week, it's going to be Barrier Free Design for Planners. Oh, yeah, it's 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
Thank you. Mr. Tagel?
Nothing.
Ms. Dufresne?
I've spoken enough tonight, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Savadon?
Two things. We have a social media presence and we release videos on Instagram and TikTok and all that good thing, all that good stuff. And the sultry voice of an angel that you hear in those, on those social media posts is sitting right over there.
Voice of Troy.
Voice of Troy.
Oh, wow.
And not anywhere near as importantly. Thank you for the reminder of the joint meeting, Planning Commission, City Council's joint meeting next Monday. You're not going to get a 160-page or whatever it was, planning package. What they're proposing to do is unveil the project before your very eyes, the project to date, the concept as it stands by Monday, to Planning Commission and City Council. So it's kind of an event, if you will. The architect's going to walk us through the program and why the building is proposed to be placed where it is. And the engagement that's been done so far and all these details, and I think it's going to be a fantastic experience for all of us. I've heard that many of you have taken up library on their offer for guided tours. Please do so. You'll see what the reality is today. And with that, I thank you.
Mr. Carlyle?
Yeah, I was, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Savadon, did you want to address the comment from earlier about the people not getting notice?
Yeah.
And do we think that's appropriate to send out notices for the postponed hearing so we don't have that comment again?
We, yeah, we could, we could, we could talk about it. We sent, we sent notice. I know because we got, we got some return to sender envelopes that returned to us, which happens all the time.
That woman suggested that she had spoken to you. I think I saw the emails. Do you know exactly where she lives? Is she outside of the 300 feet maybe?
No, she's, she's next to it.
I just, I just don't want there to be
No.
A suggestion that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Right.
We are.
I can provide all proof tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock.
I'm sure you can, but I just, let's just double check and double cross the Ts and the Is for the next meeting.
Yes, we will.
Thank you. I just want to say, I took the library tour. I don't know how many of you guys did, but with, you know, it was with Emily Dumas and Philip Quick, and it was really amazing. They're excellent, they did an excellent job explaining what the needs are and what they've done with the space and how they've worked it for so long. And I would encourage anybody watching to schedule a meeting, not just us, but the residents of Troy, because it's really important that you understand, because it is going to go to, I'm assuming it's going to end up on the ballot, and it's really important that everyone understands, you know, what they're looking, what they're, what they're asking for.
May I, Chair?
Yes.
Real quick question, Mr. Savadon. I'm sorry. We will eventually be voting on the site plan for the library, will the Planning Commission, and I assume that will be pretty rapidly since they want to get a ballot proposal out soon.
Well, we're going to get into it Monday night with the details, but we're really talking about coming up with a, with a concept and a number that so they can put it on the ballot. If, if the voters approve the ballot, after that, after that vote, I don't have a date yet, but at some point after that, it would come back to Planning Commission.
Thank you.
All right, nobody has anything else. We are adjourned. 10:34.